Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. We have a work session this evening and we're going to cover two topics. The first topic is we are going to review the monitoring report for Goal 1. And then the second topic will be to review Goal 3, which is one of the board goals. And we're all super excited to get into the presentation this evening. I think what I will do is turn it first to Ms. Materano and give a special shout out to Josie because I think she's here somewhere as well. We are going to use a different, kind of a little bit of a different monitoring report. There's been some changes that have been made, I think, in partnership with Dr. Roberts as well. And with that, Ms. Materano, if you want to frame it, and we'll have a monitoring conversation.
Yes. Thank you, and thank you to Dr. Roberts, Josie, and team for the updates. Some of the updates that you'll see, the first one in particular, is the evaluation of the monitoring report itself. It used to be either on track or not on track. And now we've created a four-step evaluation, or four different criteria, that a monitoring report can be evaluated on. The first would be that we are exceeding the target, and that is, of course, where we would like to be. Meeting the target, developing toward the target, or insufficient movement towards the target. We felt that we needed to better understand on the paradigm of the data, where we were really at when it came to the data, more than just meeting or not meeting. So we added in those additional indicators. So that's the first item that you'll see. The additional level of detail that you'll notice in the report is going to be that all of the what's going well, what's not going well, has been aligned with the strategic actions of our strategic plan, and particularly the strategic pillars within the strategic plan. So the board is able to now see exactly how the action aligns to meeting the strategic goals that we've set for ourself in the strategic plan. We've also indicated, with a little bit more level of detail, where we're at with some of the action steps. So not only is it, this is a new action that we're taking, this is an adjusted action that we're taking, but we are now able to see the date or timing associated with that action, whether or not it's something that will be done in the next quarter, is it something that will be done by the end of the year, is it something that we can expect within the life of the goal itself? Did I cover everything, Dr. Roberts?
Yeah, that's thorough. Thank you.
Okay. So we will go ahead and begin monitoring as a board. And I'd like to start off with asking questions of Dr. Roberts and team to better understand the current reality, or how is it that we got to the place that we're at in our goals, and know that we are evaluating Goal 1, which is our 4th grade proficiency towards literacy achievement. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Ms. Materano, point of order from me and Madam Chair. Several months ago, we started a practice, particularly as we think about the new framing that both Madam Materano just shared. And the practice that we started was focused more on the lever that talks about developing toward target, because this really provides an opportunity for us, even when we are not necessarily achieving the target or have surpassed the target, for us to bring individuals into this space with some brevity, who are either closest to the work around this goal, either teachers, staff, or students, for them to share a little bit about their experiences, because I think it's an important perspective that it offers, so that we are not just continuously looking at and observing a monitoring report, sort of in a narrow way. And so with that, I would like to have members of our team, who are just closest to the goal, come forward, please. Thank you.
Hello, Madam Chair, and Board, and Dr. Roberts. I am so honored and excited to get the chance to not only introduce myself, but more importantly, introduce some amazing humans that were able to come tonight, that I'd like to celebrate. I am Allison Salo, the Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning. And I, since last February, upon taking this position, or accepting this position, I have either attended school board meetings, or watched every single one of them online. And it was to learn, at first, from all of you, to listen to your questions, and to just get excited about the school year, and start making some plans. And since then, especially over the last couple of months, I've really been listening. And I've been listening to the great questions that you've been asking, and putting a lot of thought to maybe why you're asking some of the questions. And one question I've heard a couple of times over the last couple of months is, you're making some big decisions about budget. You have a tremendous responsibility, right, to our community, as do we. And we take that seriously. And one question that's come up is about roles and jobs, right? And those that we may be cutting, or adding, or requesting within the budget. And a very important role, that is very connected to Goal 1, that we're going to be talking about in every single action step, is our curriculum coordinators. I could not possibly do my job without them. As the elementary director, I get to work with 10 of the most talented individuals that work so hard behind the scenes every single day. And everything they do this year, and prior to me, starting July 1st, has to do with the board goals. Everything that we do is about our kids, and it is always surrounded by data, every single decision that we make. But it is not me doing all of that, and I could not do that without them. There are 10 that are hired by Des Moines Public Schools, and 2 that we've been so lucky to sort of lease through the AEA. So I would like to introduce them tonight. I also have an amazingly talented elementary principal here, that I'd like to introduce, who would like to speak to that work. And I'd like to read a narrative from Renita Lord, the principal at King Elementary. While you're listening to them, I want you to be envisioning these humans when we're talking about these goals, when we're talking about our progress toward meeting those goals, and their direct impact, that we may not always connect to students. So first of all, I'd like to read what Renita Lord has written about one of our coordinators named Olivia Oricella. Olivia has been impactful at King in a variety of ways. She is an ELL curriculum coordinator. We have had a significant increase in MLL students, particularly newcomers. She attends, participates, and helps teachers plan for EL lessons. She brings ideas and strategies which not only impact our MLL students, but all students. Olivia works with our ELL teachers, and has helped to give ideas for professional development within our building. She's attended our professional development and collaborated with teachers. Olivia has also participated in our data dives with PLCs to help think of different research-based strategies in which we can use with our students. I also, just in case it's helpful, I created a document which lists exactly what they do, who they serve. So we have 38 elementary schools. They are embedded within those schools. And I welcome and encourage you to go out and visit a school, and walk alongside them to see what they do every single day. So I'm going to give this to Patrick and ask him to pass that along. So before I introduce the humans that are here, there are many of the coordinators tonight watching online, because some of them are working through their doctoral program and things like that. So I want to make sure that I celebrate Abby Jones, Nadia Drake, Olivia Oricella, Breann Puderbaugh, Jamie O'Brien, Kathleen Davenport, Deborah Hill, Lynn Bowen, and Melissa Emmanoyle. Without further ado, I would like to introduce Teresa Ralph Chapman and Emily Weezer, who are both curriculum coordinators at the elementary level. And then our amazing principal at Moore Elementary, Renee Gelfand.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the invitation to come here and speak tonight, because this is truly a role that's very important as a building leader in Des Moines. As Allison said, I'm currently the principal at Moore Elementary. This is my first year serving the Moore community. Previously, I was the principal at Hillis Elementary for eight years, and have been with Des Moines Public Schools for a total of 18 years. When I refer to this position with my staff or other people within Des Moines, I prefer to refer to them as curriculum partners, because they truly are a partner in the difficult work that we do every day within our buildings. I'm just going to, I jotted some notes about all of the things that I rely on them for, and the ways that they support us in the work at the building level. So the first thing is, they do provide direct support to our instructional coaches in the building. This year, I am fortunate to have a brand-new instructional coach who is learning. And my curriculum partner does some work with her, learning cycles with her, just as an instructional coach would do with a classroom teacher, or other teachers within the building. She also provides direct support with our PLC leaders, which is, as you know, a TLC position. And within Moore, we truly, our teachers are also leaders, and so we have a collaborative leadership structure there. And all leaders deserve to learn, and our curriculum partners help with that within the building. They also provide support with planning and implementing professional development. They guide the instructional coach with that, the associate principal, and myself. We are able to meet frequently, and really come and provide professional development that aligns with our board goals, and with our district-level goals. They provide collaboration on database decision-making that we have through our collaborative problem-solving process, and making sure that all the decisions that we make, that impact our students, are really aligned and focused. They have supported our implementation of coaching around the UPP process, and any curriculum implementation that we do. After I received this invitation to come and speak today, I spoke to the associate principal a little bit at Moore. And just thinking about the difference in last year before I was there, and this year, and last year, they did not have, for whatever reason, as much support from a curriculum partner. And we talked about what that felt like, and the differences with that. And she talked about how that presence and support from the district level really is able to keep that focus on curriculum and the standards, rather than all of those outside influences that can come into a school throughout the days. Also, our curriculum partner, who is Teresa Ralph Chapman, I should mention her, is truly a sounding board for me. You know, this is what I'm thinking, this is how, these are the actions that I'm thinking about taking, aligned to our board goals, what do you think? And she does a great job of keeping me focused around that. She also, one thing that I love about curriculum partners, and I have always sought them out throughout my nine years as a principal here, is that they really bridge a relationship between the district and the building level. We hear a lot about, oh, the district this, oh, the district that. And really, how we present those curriculum partners, and the work that they do alongside us within the building, is truly in support. It's not evaluative, it's a tool for the teachers to use when they have questions or need something. And our teachers use her a lot. They invite her into their classrooms, they invite her to model instruction for them, lessons, and it's really been, I can't say enough about the relationship that I've been able to have with the curriculum partners over the years. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Emily Weezer, and I am on the Elementary Teaching and Learning Team. I've been an educator for 26 years, the last 15 in Des Moines Public Schools, and the last 10 at a district-level position. In my work supporting curriculum coaching in schools, I am often asked, what do you actually do? Which is a complicated answer, but I am so honored to be talking to all of you about it tonight. I think the best way to describe what I do is exactly that bridge. I help connect what research in teaching and learning says, what our district leaders envision, and then to the practices enacted in the classroom to support student achievement. I work for administrators, instructional coaches, and teacher leaders with professional development, and follow-up with job-embedded differentiated professional learning. In every industry, there is professional learning as we all try to improve. Education is no different, and on the Teaching and Learning Team, we take professional learning for adults pretty seriously. A very pivotal study, long ago, from Bruce Joyce and Dr. Beverly Showers, studied how beneficial professional learning can be. Very traditional, go to this session and learn about this new thing, changes teachers' practice in the classroom about 0% of the time. When professional learning, or the theory of a new practice, is paired with demonstrations and opportunities for practice in professional learning, you can expect 65% of the teachers to know more about that content, and about 5% of teachers to implement the new learning in their classroom. They simply need more. When we use that, when we use theory, demonstration, and practice, and add in coaching, we can expect 95% of teachers to transfer that learning to the classroom. The research is clear. To bring about lasting changes and to reach our goals, we all need support. One example of how our work would be in the past, one example of our work in the past two years, is that our team has created Elementary PD around the GLEAM framework, brought support to schools, and have seen positive changes in the classroom experiences for all our DNPS students. We use the same theory in our work as curriculum coordinators, to support our schools with job-embedded, building-specific, differentiated support, otherwise known as coaching. Our small team of 10 supports 38 elementary schools at varying degrees. We've created and led quite a bit of professional development for administrators, instructional coaches, and teachers. We support ELL teachers, mentors, PLC leaders, brand-new teachers in the first weeks of their job, extended core teachers, building leadership teams, first-grade teachers, and interventionists, all at the district level. We do all this general support for schools, while we bring specific knowledge around curriculum, instruction, and coaching to our team. We help our school teams support adult learning in their schools. This looks different at each building, as each building's needs are carefully considered, and we listen to the leaders in the building. We support in many areas, curriculum knowledge of reading, writing, math, science, social studies, data literacy, and how to lead adult learning. One small example of the learning we've done this year is how to gather low-inference notes when coaches are in the classroom, and give feedback to support student achievement. Then we work with coaches to visit classrooms, gather data, and leaving that actionable feedback. In short, we are that bridge. We deliver professional learning, our district believes will make an impact, and then we work alongside school teams to enact those changes to support student learning.
Okay, one more. So, hope you're ready. Thank you so much for this opportunity to share a little bit about the work that my amazing team does in support of our DNPS students and staff. My name is Teresa Ralph Chapman. I've been a proud DNPS employee for 25 years, serving our district in a variety of different roles. I'm currently a member of the Elementary Curriculum Team. I'd be remiss if I didn't start by recognizing the rest of my team. It is an honor and a joy collaborating with and working alongside my DNPS and Heartland curriculum partners, who are innovative, knowledgeable, and dedicated to educational equity. I'd like to share a couple of specific examples of the ways that we impact student achievement, and work towards our building goals. An important part of our role is the development and facilitation of professional learning, as Emily mentioned. For example, this semester, we were asked to develop two different strands of learning to support two different groups of teachers. You'll notice this in the board monitoring report. Some of my colleagues provided learning to building academic interventionists and instructional coaches. These sessions focused on making database decisions, so that we're using data to inform instruction and meet student needs. There was an emphasis on accelerating and intensifying instruction in order to improve student outcomes towards grade-level standards. We also developed and facilitated learning for all first-grade teachers throughout the district in three half-day sessions. Our focus was on differentiated instruction, which is provided to students in small groups by teachers during foundational literacy time. We engaged in learning around research-based instruction, and analyzed data to inform next steps in teaching. Additionally, we collaborated by sharing resources to enhance planning and instruction. Every time we plan professional development, our goal is to positively impact student achievement, through strengthening the capacity of our leaders and teachers to provide grade-level, engaging, affirming, and meaningful instruction. Another part of our role is to provide direct support at the building level, as Renee mentioned. Based on data, schools receive embedded coordinator support, which could be up to two full days a week, or more targeted support throughout the year. While we are at schools, we engage in a variety of activities to support their building goals and our district goals, all of which are in order to improve student outcomes. We collaborate with leaders to develop instructional systems and visit classrooms. We support teaching within grade-level teams, to enhance planning around GLEAM instruction. In addition, we partner to plan building professional learning and ongoing implementation of our high-quality curricula. This gives us a great opportunity to learn from our teachers, and to help identify barriers or challenges to teaching, so that we can seek pathways to eliminate or reduce those barriers. We believe in our DNPS students. We believe in our DNPS teachers and building leaders. We believe that all students should receive high-quality, grade-level, and standards-aligned instruction, and we work every day towards meeting that goal. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
And while she's not speaking tonight, I didn't want to forget to also introduce Shannon Hillison, who is another Elementary Curriculum Coordinator. If you could just wave or say hello. Thank you for just allowing us an opportunity. I heard you, we heard you. I wanted to make sure that while we're talking about this report, that you can see the humans behind the scenes who've really helped make that happen. So thank you for letting us share just a little bit about our work.
Thank you.
Appreciate all of you.
Anything additional, Dr. Roberts, before we begin? Questions?
No, thank you so much for indulging us.
Wonderful. Thank you for providing that insight and level of detail regarding the work that is done by the curriculum partners in the district. I appreciate it. Board members, we can begin our inquiry to the data regarding meeting our Goal 1. You'll notice that we are evaluating three interim goals this evening, all of which are currently developing toward target. Let's focus first on questions that will help us understand the current reality of how we arrived where we are at today with regards to each of these interim goals. Board members, I turn it over to you for your questions.
Dr. Roberts, I knew I was the one who asked maybe the stupid question about what is AMIRA? Is that how you say it, AMIRA?
Yes, ma'am.
And I am wondering, this is, so there's been a lot of discussion about AI and literacy, and like, how is that, how to think about AMIRA? Is it like, something that evolves as you, you know, standardizing, like testing, if you answer one question, then it pushes you to the next one? Is it that type of customized experience for a student?
Yeah, that's one we have looked at. It's an EPS learning system AI tutor that is interacting with students. And so it gives students feedback immediately that allows them to sort of course-correct or self-correct.
Great, thank you.
And it's in two languages, both English and Spanish. So it's really an asset to our multi-language learns as well.
Do you think there's a future for a third language? Or is that, that's on them, obviously?
There is, and you know, in districts that are culturally and linguistically as diverse as we are, you know, with over 100 languages spoken here, it would behoove those companies to start to think about how to accommodate the additional languages spoken.
Thank you.
Dr. Roberts?
Try again. Dr. Roberts, regarding interim Goal 1A, the report indicates that our 3rd grade has the highest percentage of students meeting the benchmark. What do you believe may account for the difference across grade levels 2 and 3?
Certainly, there's a lot of work being done with the 3rd grade. I know that while there was some work happening around not only providing students exposure to high-quality instructional material, but there was not as much intentionality as we've started to see lately, at least beginning this fall and certainly in January, around utilizing resources just as the tenets of the Science of Reading, to make sure that we are really focused on building literacy skills in those students. Combined with the Science of Reading, which offers a lot of, I would say, tier-one instruction, we also have a really robust multi-tier support system. The coordinators who just left, I think there's also much more intentionality around coordinators in collaboration with principals, instructional coaches, and teachers, observing students when they are not only being taught, but looking at the outcomes from formative assessments, and then encouraging teachers, right, with immediate feedback to go back and reteach in order to capture where they have missed some students. We heard one of our coordinators reference differentiated instruction. There's much more of a commitment now, I believe, to differentiate in, to meet the needs of all our students.
So a follow-up. There was more intentionality behind our 3rd grade students, and less on our 2nd grade, and now we've enhanced that to be both? Is that, am I understanding that, is that an accurate statement?
No, it's all-encompassing. Sort of the resources that I just shared, the actions that I just shared, is meeting the needs of all of our students.
Okay. So can you help me understand why you think the 3rd graders were so much higher than our 2nd?
I'll make an assumption, right? And that is, our students, how they responded to the instruction. Certainly, another consideration is teacher practice, right? How are teachers delivering instruction to our 3rd graders? And then I also make an assumption that it certainly may have a lot to do with the prerequisite skills, if you may, that 3rd graders already had. I compare, I don't want to compare just where students are based in grade level, in an apples-to-apples way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Dr. Roberts, on page, on page 6, one of the boxes talks about the AMERICOR reading service members in 11 of our elementary schools. Have we looked at the 11, and is there any conclusion drawn? Is extra human power making a difference where we are trying to meet these reading goals? And so, like, do we know based off of those schools versus the other schools? And then can you just elaborate a little bit about how those schools were chosen for the extra help with reading, so just so we get a little bit of context behind that? But my, what I'm wondering is, did the extra bodies make a difference in the classroom for the teachers?
Yeah, thank you, board members. The extra bodies who are trained definitely made a difference. And so we have 11 AMERICOR tutors or candidates who have been trained on the practices around the Science of Reading. They spend an average of about 30 hours a week, and I believe that our team selected, we have 22 schools that are designated as targeted in the district, and so we started to prioritize those schools that have been designated as targeted. Our director of teaching and learning, who was up here earlier, Ali Salo, actually, has been in been instrumental with other members of the team in getting the AmeriCorps folks on board. Should we have an opportunity to actually expand this tutoring opportunity to extra bodies, as you were saying it? And I'm saying, yes, the extra bodies, but extra bodies who are trained in other schools would certainly add value. The challenge is, right, those are the only tutors that AmeriCorps has. And so, hopefully, two things. One, they will have many more AmeriCorps core members to be a part of this work next year. And two, in terms of budget reallocation, we certainly want to, we certainly want to think about planning to accommodate more next year.
Is there a, do we know, is there a difference in those schools? Like, is there, is there an achievement difference when we're talking about outcomes? Is there an achievement difference in those schools versus other schools? And whether that be an accelerated improvement or straight numbers?
There's some observable differences, and I think the team can certainly expound on this. But I would think since we started in January, those observable differences, I wouldn't want to rest too much of a hat on that, right? Three months of tutoring, yeah.
Okay.
Just a follow-up question. How many, page six, in regards to the AmeriCorps members, reading service members, how many bodies are there? How many people are there? I see there 11 elementary buildings and 30 hours a week. How many people do you actually, do we actually have? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, it does. I'll check with the team for confirmation, but how many AmeriCorps?
And while Allison's looking up, Dr. Roberts, is it possible that volunteers could, could play a similar role as AmeriCorps members?
I'll add the word "trained in," because I think that's important, right?
No, yeah, that's where I was going. Yeah, I mean, I think that's, because obviously, you want consistency and training, but yeah.
Yeah, even a basic interaction such as adults who are just reading to children can make an impact. But I think we can accelerate that impact when we have, for example, the kids of the AmeriCorps core members, they are trained, right, in the tenets and framework around the science of reading, so.
Hi. So, I actually just recently asked AmeriCorps to pull, and then, excuse me, implementation report, just to see, is this making a difference? We did start with a smaller set, as Dr. Roberts shared, just based on humans that they were able to recruit. And they have all been trained. They utilize 10 to 11 different consistent interventions. They work one-on-one with students. We have 75.2%, so if you think of our whole DNPS program right now, 75.2% of the students that work with the AmeriCorps volunteers, and this is based on they are trained and also able to fast-progress monitor, so they've been progress monitoring these students, have made aggressive growth. We have nine students across our schools that have actually exited the program more, as they like to call it, graduated, no longer need their support. This is not, this does not replace an intervention from a trained, certified teacher. This is just an extra, it's a bonus, it's a supplement, it's another adult that the kids are excited to work with. We did try to focus primarily on first grade. They are only allowed to serve for 30 hours a week. Molton Elementary is actually having the most success right now, so 100% of the time, the students that are being served by that particular AmeriCorps volunteer, like, she hasn't missed a day. They've seen a lot of progress and growth. So, I hope at some point, we can come and have her come to a school board meeting, and we can celebrate her and the work that she's doing at Molton. None of these people are trained teachers. They were just excited about the opportunity. And as Dr. Roberts said, we wanted to see, is this worth it? And it's showing great success as another layer of support for reading instruction. And so, hopefully, we can add it to more schools next year.
How can we be supportive of that? If there aren't enough volunteers?
Yes.
How can we be supportive getting out into the community as a bridge to the community? How can we get more AmeriCorps volunteers?
That's a great question. So, first of all, I think part of the issue was that this wasn't something that had been planned, I started July 1st, so it wasn't something in our costing or budget, right? So, we had to get some permission, and that took some time to, to see what funding source we could use. And then, once we got the ball rolling, it was about November, it didn't take much time before they had about 20 or more people that we interviewed. We just wanted to make sure that they were also the right fit. We did have three that were hired that ended up saying it was not the right fit. So, that's also part of it, is fit for them as well. I think honestly, Patrick, in answer to your question, I think planning. If we're able to proactively plan now for next year, and I did put it in the costing budget for next year to, in hopes that there's a possibility to be able to do it within every elementary school. I know that's a big ask, go big or go home, so at least I'd try.
Thank you. That answers the process question, and it answers the internal question. We are a bridge to the community, though. And so, help me understand how AmeriCorps works, because if they don't have the bodies to bring you, you don't have the volunteers. And so, yes, part of it is our budgeting and our costing, but is, am I understanding correctly that they only had a certain number of volunteers? How do we get more people into the program? How can we help get more people in the program? Is that a help?
Sure, yeah, I'm not sure about AmeriCorps recruitment strategy, but we are certainly open to engaging in conversations with them. But as I think about additional bodies, I know that Kaylee, who's leading our partnership work, has already been in contact with some of our major friends in the business community. And we have dozens of individuals who are, have signed up, I think, are beginning to sign up to volunteer to be in schools. I think one sort of ambitious goal we have is to find ways to probably expose them to, maybe on onboarding, if you may, of volunteers that gives them a little bit of insight into what we are expecting from them as they engage with students.
That was my other question. What's the range of training here needed for a volunteer to be effective in the science of learning? What's the best-case scenario? And what's a, okay, like, go for it, you know, like, you'll be helpful versus a, like, really good training that gets us where we want to be, putting someone in front of a student to help them learn?
I want to make the distinction, and that's an excellent question, the distinction between having an AmeriCorps core member who is being compensated, and so they certainly are allowed to, or we are allowed to, or with their organization, to dedicate some time to expose them to the tenets of the science of reading. Conversely, our partners who are coming, for example, from principle or somewhat organization, we cannot expect that kind of time commitment from them. Yeah.
And, and maybe I missed the number of volunteers that we have. Do we know how many people we have? How many?
So, right now, we have 11.
It's, so it's 11 service members in 11 elementary buildings, but we have 11 members as volunteers?
Correct. Yes. So, we have one per building.
One, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And also, in, in reference to their training, it took about three weeks for AmeriCorps to get them trained, and they came with all the materials and resources they needed, which is also nice, because it takes some of the burden off of already really heavy teacher plates, to try to, to give them access to those things, so.
Okay.
And I did have another question, but I think it was already answered. Under page six, regarding the volunteers, you mentioned under what's not going well, that you didn't have the resources to provide this in fiscal year '25. And my question was, what's being done to increase the number of volunteers potentially that we can have? And what's the desired number of volunteers, AmeriCorps volunteers, that you would want?
I would say 38, right, at least. Ideally, we would love to have a trained volunteer in each building, and certainly, as we think about costing and having sort of a nimble approach with our budget, we want to be thinking about how can we sort of have a line item that will have us utilize funds to support AmeriCorps. Certainly, federal funding is one consideration as well.
Dr. Roberts, do you or Allison know what we put in the budget? I know we put in an AmeriCorps investment in the FY '26 budget. Is that the go-big-or-go-home one in each building?
Yes, it is. Yeah. So, because they started in January, it wasn't a full, like, it's more, what I put in the costing report is actually more accurate to what they would get paid for an entire school year from August, which would be great if we could start right away in August and end the year in May. Since they started in January, it's less. But what we put in the FY '26 costing is, would be accurate for a full school year. It's approximately $12,000 per human, so.
I really apologize, I really appreciate it. I just want to say, volunteering is, and I'm going to separate AmeriCorps, which almost feels like an internship, right? Like, a paid internship as opposed to volunteers, true volunteers. But if you have determined that volunteerism, long-term volunteerism, is a strategy, I want to lift up that I think there's a lot of people in our community that would love to commit to something, recognizing that you need the capacity, the infrastructure to support all of those volunteers, right, and deploy them effectively. But I just, I really appreciate the openness to trying these different types of strategies to help our teachers.
I had a question around kind of the trends we recognize. I mean, it's not new, from spring to fall, with the decline, I believe that's been attributed to some of that summer slide that's been mentioned. So, on page seven, I know we spent quite a bit of time on AmeriCorps, so I won't belabor that. I would love to learn more about the summer enrichment program that's starting this summer, and am I out of line?
You're good.
Okay. The summer enrichment program starting this summer and how that's being organized? Is there a need of volunteers there? Or, and is this being piloted at certain schools? I see it mentioned first through fifth grade, or is it kind of more of just a district-wide initiative, and students are coming to a space versus it being at schools with it being during the summer?
So, Ali's actually leading up, heading up some of the work. I'll have her respond and speak to that as well, yeah.
Sure. So, right now, what we're, we're considering is either having this be specific to ELL programming at a specific site, or even better, partnering with a couple of different schools across the district that offer programming for general education students, all students in the morning, and then our ELL students would get the opportunity to stay for the afternoon as well. And so, that's two different options that we're exploring. And hopefully, in the future, then, we could extend that to more schools across our district and make it more systemic, so that more students are getting that opportunity. And in answer to your question about volunteering, yes. Something I'm really excited about is I've been partnering with Amanda Miller in our Food and Nutrition Department, as well as Jason Allen in Metro Kids Care, trying to find ways to, one thing I heard, being new in July, is that a roadblock could be that we can't always get our kids there, or kids aren't always attending. And so, thinking, trying to think of free ways in which we could go and support kids where they're already at. So, I'm partnering with Metro Kids Care, and we're going to be providing around six different devices and giving kids the opportunity to get on AMIRA, which is an additional reading opportunity that they would already be familiar with. It's, it's an AI tutoring program that provides micro-interventions for kids, but it's getting them practicing throughout the day. They're already at Metro Kids, why wouldn't we? And then, also partnering with Food and Nutrition, so going to the Food and Nutrition sites, especially our apartments, and partnering in that way as well. And so, we're still exploring those opportunities, just trying to be creative, but also that outreach, and just making sure they know we care, and we're going to go find them and make sure that they're getting the support they need.
I appreciate, sorry, the focus is going to be on, again, language skills, cross-cultural skills, academic skills. And I think it would behoove us to start to think about having year-over-year consistency with having some summer enrichment program.
Yeah, I was going to say, I appreciate the thoughtfulness of what you mentioned, meeting them where they're at. I think that's probably going to be crucial and critical to seeing success, and it is going to where the students are versus asking them to show up to buildings that maybe they don't have access to.
And in doing so, we are going to need volunteers to help make that happen. So, exploring those opportunities as well, and I think spreading the positive narrative about our school district, so.
Thank you. Is there any technology barrier, resource, technology resource barrier to deploying the AMIRA technology in that way? Will you have enough to go to the sites we need to go to? Just wondering if there's any resource barrier?
We certainly will. The work that CIO Neil Schroeder is doing with his team, I do not anticipate that we will have any barriers to technology.
Okay.
Anna, we haven't heard from you. Is there anything that you have?
I think my, my thoughts were same as Skylar's. When I did see the new actions for the summer enrichment program, I was super excited. And then, I think that that, honestly, if I look at our numbers for spring of last year and spring of that this year, especially in goal 1A, there was a, a good increase, and I'm hoping that with the summer reading program, I bet fall, that's just going to jump right up, and we're going to have a even peak up with the next coming year. So, I'm super excited about that.
Me too. That's definitely our hope.
Are, a lot of what we're seeing in this report is around teacher learning and support and professional development, and rightly so. Can you help us understand how we are measuring and keeping track of the result of that? Just as we are with our students, we are putting a lot of resources toward this. And how are we holding each other accountable that we are going through this learning, but then it's actually taking hold in the classroom? Are those the gleam walks? Are those the, and how does that differentiate with what we heard here with the coordinators? Because it sounds like they're doing some of the same work to my ear, to my uneducated ear. Help me understand how those are different, because the gleam walks are doing some of this, I think, in our elementary schools, kind of holding teachers accountable and helping them practice what we're trying to preach. How is that all working, and how are we going to measure that?
So, before Ali jumps in, I'll frame it this way and respond by thinking about sort of two different things. One, the gleam works, the gleam walks is where we see the practice happening, right? It's the more tactical approach to the work. But even before we get to the gleam walks, or after the gleam walks, we understand that there's a necessity for us to truly calibrate around what does high-quality instructional, high-quality instructional delivery model looks like? And the way for us to get to that is by having these monthly, at least monthly, conveniences where our curriculum coordinators and coaches and honors are connecting so to not only be explosive professional development that is targeting, differentiated to meet their needs, but strengthens calibration.
Okay. Where are we measuring then? Are we measuring in the gleam walks? Or are we measuring, is that the place that we are, that we're kind of taking an assessment of whether the training is taking hold in our teaching staff?
Quantitative measures certainly is around student outcomes.
Okay.
Not a quantitative measure that we look at is certainly the gleam walk team who conduct these inventories certainly think about and document, right, the number of classrooms, number of teachers who are, for example, delivering grade-level instruction. We have conversations about that. The, sort of, one of the qualitative measures is, you know, the teacher's willingness to engage, right, in a, with fidelity around the, what does grade-level instruction look like? Because again, we're, for one of the first times, I think, we are really getting a lot more traction with how we are delivering on the curriculum that we invested in about seven years ago. And so, again, getting more investment from teachers around delivering that with fidelity.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Dr. Roberts, for interim goal 1B, the data reveals a persistent gap between our Black and Latinx students and the overall student population. What specific strategies are being implemented to accelerate the progress for the students in these groups?
Thank you, board members. I think some of the strategies that we talk about are practices and routines around phonemic awareness, phonics, really doubling down on fluency, with much more intentionality to make sure that those students, in this case, you referenced, is it first grade? Which grade did she reference?
1B is our second and third grade. Specific to our Black and Latinx.
Certainly. And then, again, additionally, in terms of what we're seeing is more of a commitment around skill blocks, where students are getting a lot of foundational skills. So, we're seeing more calibration around the skill blocks. So we're seeing more calibration around the skill blocks between grades one, two, and specifically the grades one and two.
And those are interventions that are happening for all of our students in those grade levels. Is there anything specific or are there any specific strategies that we're implementing specifically for our Black and Latinx students to advance or accelerate their achievement?
Yeah. One of the benefits of gleam is that when we think about, it offers engagement of permanent, meaningful instruction. So the specificity that comes to mind for me is thinking about, is our pedagogical delivery model culturally responsive? Are we making sure that the delivery of instruction is meaningful to students? Are we making real-world connections to the content that they're being exposed to? That's at a high level. I'm sure there's much more specificity around that the team can speak to. But I think the gleam framework, looking at the E, N, and M certainly is specific to addressing, right, and highlighting the cultural needs of our students.
Thank you. And just a follow-up. Is there, are there specific strategies or interventions that we are providing to support our teachers in supporting our Black and Latinx students specifically to improve their effectiveness? Whether it be, I know that there's lots of gleam professional development, but is there anything specific that we're doing to support our teachers as they engage in the work with our students, particularly our Black and Latinx students?
I think the feedback cycle is powerful. And that feedback cycle includes not just a single person, not only a principal, but a principal, instructional coaches, curriculum coordinators, even our district office leaders are spending time doing the instructional rungs being led by our CIO. Their teachers are being observed. But then we're going back and unpacking two really key aspects of the work. One, giving them feedback around their instruction, delivery, their pedagogical practice, and then really encouraging them to consider additional strategies in their reteach. Because again, if a teacher, after he or she would have delivered sort of a series of lessons, so let's say over a period of 10 days, and then they administer a formative assessment, based on that data, we don't want teachers to just move away, right? Or move on to the next lesson because 60% of their students demonstrated mastery. A part of the cycle that I'm hearing from the team in terms of how they're looking at supporting our teachers is they're providing teachers with that targeted feedback so that they can tweak their lessons around reteaching. Additionally, I think one thing that I've observed and hearing from the team as well is how do we support our teachers who are teaching, particularly our elementary teachers, that are struggling with this dichotomy between pacing versus mastery with a curriculum? And so it's easy for teachers, right, because we've set this curriculum, have this bar, to want to move forward, move forward with the lessons? Because the pacing guide dictates that they should. But I think what I'm seeing a lot more of right now is there's a commitment to make sure that teachers are not necessarily adherent to the pacing guide. We want to give teachers more autonomy. We've gotten a lot of feedback from teachers over the last couple of years. We weren't allowing and creating space for that to happen. Our principal supervisors and team will tell you now, it's very different. We are allowing for spaces for teachers to pace appropriately, but ensure the students are demonstrating mastery.
And not something that you have to answer tonight. I did not offer this question in advance of the meeting. But for the teachers that don't feel that they're receiving that targeted feedback after those walkthroughs, what would you recommend for those teachers to seek out that or to receive that feedback regarding those walkthroughs?
For those teachers to communicate that to us, right? And us being, we have building leaders, we have principal supervisors, we have our teaching and learning team. One of the sort of systems that we have in place here in a modern public school that really excites and encourages me is the fact that we have layers of individuals who have really solid instructional chops supporting our teachers. If we're not meeting their needs, because there's no way that any person or a group of individuals should visit a teacher's classroom and not give them feedback within no less than 48 hours, right? I know one of the practices that I've observed is where that feedback is given sometimes with something as simple as a note, the initial feedback. But in terms of really unpacking for teachers where there's some gaps and how they can get better and improve, it is my expectation that the team will make sure that we are doing that in a really robust way.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So teachers, reach out. Please reach out. We do not want you to sort of be left hanging when you're not receiving feedback after we visited your classroom.
Thank you. Ms. Knox, do you have anything regarding current state?
I do not.
Okay. Board members, anything additional regarding current state before we move to next steps and strategic actions and future state?
Okay. Other than to point out, other than to point out that I got ridiculously excited about volunteerism as a strategy, and that is a future state question. So it's exciting. Yeah.
I might have, this might be current state. For the summer learning opportunities that would possibly, or that would take place at the Metro Kid Care site, are there financial barriers to families participating in Metro Kids?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are. At this stage, certainly, we will do everything within our locus of control to get students at least to our sites. The art of additional financial barriers, Dr. Mary Barra, is I'm not sure if we can certainly support parents with that. But we have a structure whereby parents know that they can reach out to us to have those conversations. And if there are opportunities for us to remove those barriers, then we will. Are there specific barriers that you're considering?
No. I was looking at the Metro site, and I saw that it said that there are fees, but I couldn't find what the fees were. So I knew there was some kind of a cost. I didn't know if it was waived or how that worked. But it was really a stem from Kim's question around the Black and Latinx students, particularly those who are not ELL that would be able to be part of the Be Glad. How are they receiving summer enrichment also? If finances may be a barrier.
Sure. Ali?
Well, one exciting thing that, Dr. Roberts, I was lucky enough to be part of a retreat that we had just this last week, we're going to have another one this week, where we're starting to take the strategic plan and put it into action. And this was actually something we had a great discussion about this week, about some next steps around what could we do to make it more equitable for those students? And so, and that's based on our strategic plan and some future discussions. But it was already discussed this week, is what can we do? So we're exploring different options. But yeah, there is a financial barrier, and there are different scholarships and things that we could provide, but just different opportunities to explore.
Yeah. Just out of curiosity, what is the financial, like what is the investment? And this is probably too much of a question, but how many kids are we talking about here? So I, it's interesting, because somebody might be listening to this and go, well, that's $50,000. I've got that here, you know? I know that's.
No, no, I appreciate that. And so just valued community partner, if you're listening and you have $50,000, please know that we will take advantage of that. But let me just offer, and I really appreciate that question, because as a public school system, we have to be in the business of removing barriers. I know that we cannot do this solely on our own, we certainly, which is why we have a commitment to ensuring that we're opening up our doors for volunteerism and community partners. But I believe that it's important for us to, as a board and superintendent and team, to go above and beyond. And I know the board does this very well because of the connections you allow us to make. But we have to remove barriers that gets in the way of equality, pre-K-12 education for students, right? Our students, when we look at our data, 78% of our students qualify for free and reduced meals. It tells us that we are serving a very different population of students that have very different needs. And the businesses that we are in has to go beyond just reading, writing, math, science, and social studies. We have to meet those additional needs, and that's what we're committed to do in alignment with our strategic plan.
Ms. Mariano, can I ask just one last thing? I don't know, we're moving into.
You're fine.
Okay. On page five, I got really excited when I saw the word aggressive. Actually, words aggressive growth. 41.79% of Black African-American first graders made typical or aggressive growth from fall to winter. Can you, Dr. Roberts, tell us what's contributing to that growth, aggressive growth?
Yeah. And so aggressive growth by its very definition is when there's a significant improvement in literacy skills within a very short period of time. And again, there are multiple factors that probably we can attribute to that. But I think some of what we shared already, and that is one, more commitment to culturally responsive pedagogy. Certainly making sure that we are truly utilizing the tenets of the science of reading. And then the third thing that I'll add is, you know, by law, and certainly as a part of our moral commitment, every single student who is reading below proficiency gets an individualized education plan, right? Very different from what comes in IDEA in terms of individualized education plan. But it's a plan that really allows our, everyone to have awareness who services the students, right? Teachers, curriculum coordinators, coaches, and principals. For everyone to have a full understanding of what the needs of that child is. Additionally, because we recognize and value how important parental involvement is, a letter is sent home to the parents informing them that their child, where their child is performing. And so, and they are aware that their child has a plan as well. And so really being thoughtful about how we're serving every single student. Have some areas to grow there, but the work is we're getting a lot of positive traction.
Thank you. Board members, other questions regarding next steps, action items? Dr. Roberts, what can the board do to help?
Thank you, thank you, Board Member Mariano. Just continue to support us with resource allocation. I know that as we continue to have conversations about budget, the budget approval process is one that it's kind of funky and that we need to have some timelines within which we approve the budget. But what I've appreciated over the last year and a half is the board's willingness to not only have us forecast and project out what we may need, but the board's willingness to probably approve when we come back with and ask to reallocate resources, right? About 83% of our entire budget goes towards personnel. I want us to get to this place where we're not quite there yet, where at least an additional 10% of the budget should go towards teaching and learning, right? Meeting the needs of students directly. And so we're still working through that process. And I know the board continues to encourage us to make sure that we are allocating resources to our most important endeavor, and that is into schools and to students. So the board's nimbleness and continued push for the team and I around how we're utilizing our resources will be greatly appreciated.
Thank you. I know Board Member Dix mentioned in one of his questions, how do we know that these strategies and these action steps are working? And so I look forward to continuing to develop towards these targets and soon be exceeding these targets with measuring our effectiveness in the future action steps. So thank you. Board members, I welcome your feedback. Ms. Knox and Dr. Roberts and Josie and I will be meeting to go over the current state of the monitoring report and the changes that we've made. We are entering into monitoring season where every single meeting we have will have a monitoring report on it. So your feedback is welcomed in the spirit of continuous improvement. Just let us know, do you like the changes we've made? Do you have any additional changes that you'd like to be made? What are your thoughts and feelings on that? So with that, turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I think we will take a five-minute break, allow people to reset, and then we'll move into a conversation about our Goal 3. So it is 6:33, so we'll come back ideally at 6:40. Okay, we are going to regroup. I think Patrick is on his way back. Dr. Lundeen, it is Lundeen, correct?
Yes, yes.
Even though it's spelled...
It's a common Swedish name, but yeah, it is Lundeen. You got it?
Well, I think our... You good, Dr. Roberts?
I'm good, that's my chair.
I think our goal is to dig into Goal Three.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but there was something posted on Board Docs. And it's going to be up here too, on the screen. I guess the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Roberts. I'm excited to be able to present a number of aspects of what's going on with Goal Three. As we've shared in some of our previous discussions, Goal Three is meant to truly encompass not just one grade level or one band, but the entire pre-K through 12 spectrum. And so today, we wanted to bring you a picture of some of the important work that's going into a number of key phases to get us to the point where we have the proportion of students ready to enroll, employer, enlist at its highest levels. As you can see in our objectives here, we're going to start by illustrating how the work of our counselors and the ICAP plan will advance the aims of Goal Three in practice. We've discussed some of the elements of ICAP, but I think it's really important for you to have the full picture of why the changes that are being made in our counseling program are truly a game changer for what we're seeking to accomplish with Goal Three. Next, we'll dive into the Ninth Grade On Track Initiative and how it plays an integral role in advancing the aims of Goal Three in practice. Then, as was requested last month, we have prospective language for Goal Three Future Monitoring for your perusal, and then a real-time update on progress in launching Diploma Plus for the upcoming school year. And with that, we'll have opportunities for questions along the way. There's some nice little pauses in between. So with that, I'd like to ask our Coordinator of School Counseling, Erin Kruger-Cavassos, to join us along with two of our teammates from Merrill Middle School, Emma Altous and Zippora Smith, who will have graciously offered to share with us all that's going on with ICAP and why this is such an important step for us as a district.
Thank you and good evening. It's nice to see you all again. My name is Erin Cavassos, and I'm the School Counseling Coordinator for Des Moines Public Schools. To get used to my little... Oh, right here. The former teacher in me is probably showing a little bit here. I wanted to just lay out some clear goals and agenda for our time together tonight. You can take the teacher out of the classroom, the classroom out of the teacher. It's a privilege to be able to advocate on behalf of the staff who are engaging in this work with our students and families each day. I'm also pleased to be sharing a collaboration with Emma Altous and Zippora Smith, who will come up here in a little bit, to share about their experiences. I've had a blast getting to work with both of these wonderful educators as they have paved the way for ICAP implementation and our leaders both within the school community and the larger DMPS community. So really, I hope during our time together today, we're going to take a walkthrough of the ICAP development and current implementation across the district. We'll have a spotlight on Merrill Middle School's collaboration between counselors and teachers. We'll take a look at future goals, identify barriers, and explore collaborative solutions. And hopefully, the outcome will be that we've equipped you to support strategic implementation through advocacy and resources. So let's take a look at our current state. In order to have a really full, developed picture of the work that's been happening around the ICAP portion of Board Goal Three, I want to take just a couple of minutes to give you some context regarding where we've been, what's currently happening, and where we're headed. So before we get started, there's going to be a couple of terms that I'm going to use kind of interchangeably or throughout the evening, and I want to make sure that we're clear on an understanding of what those two things are. The first is the D cap, or the District Career and Academic Plan. This is a district-wide roadmap that outlines how schools will support career development and student ICAPs. This aligns resources, timelines, and roles to ensure that all students have access to career readiness tools and experiences. Within that, then, we have the Individual Career and Academic Plan, or the ICAP. That's a personalized plan for students in grades eight through 12 that helps them explore careers, set goals, and plan coursework. It includes assessments, goal setting, post-secondary planning, and reflection, and it's actually required annually under Iowa law. So how they work together, the D cap is really the structure of how the ICAP is delivered across the district. D cap is the system, and the ICAP is the student experience. So a little bit about me, this is my ninth year at the district. Prior to moving into this position, I was the School Counselor at Harding Middle School and for our district-wide programs. And over that time, it's become increasingly clear that while everyone's been working really hard with great intentions, our efforts have often been disconnected. Different teams have pursued their own goals, hoping students will graduate with a plan for success, but we've been operating in silos. In the counseling world, we call this random acts of guidance. Feedback from students and families, along with academic behavior and attendance data, has shown us that we need a more unified, intentional approach. The goal of the D cap work, we really about three years ago sat down and recognized that despite our best efforts, our work wasn't fully meeting our students' needs. That realization sparked a renewed push for a more unified approach. The goal of our D cap work has since been to align departments and programs around a shared vision, preparing students for success beyond graduation. We focused on working collaboratively, setting program goals, and leveraging each initiative to move us closer to District Board Goal Three, ensuring that all students are future-ready. Too fast. So while the state mandates that we do an ICAP for grades eight through 12, we're looking at creating a K-12 journey and eventually pre-K-12 journey, designed to give every student early, consistent, and meaningful opportunities to explore who they are, what they care about, and how school connects to that future. We've moved from isolated, high-school-only efforts to a unified, district-wide system supported by the D cap. Starting in kindergarten, students build foundational skills like identifying interests and setting goals. By middle school, they begin exploring careers and making early academic plans. In high school, students continue refining their plans and preparing for life after graduation. The goal: a fully-aligned system that prepares and empowers students at every level. As we reach full implementation, which is really outlined over the next five years, ICAP will serve as a personalized roadmap for every student. So how did we get there? What did the process look like? About three years ago, we really sat and dove into data. We looked at our Ed Insight data. That looks at over the next six years post-graduation, what students, what they intend to do, if they enroll, if they persist beyond their first year, and then if they complete a certification or a degree. So we grounded the ICAP revision in that data. We also looked at School Links usage, we looked at surveys, FAFSA results, and student and counselor feedback to identify and close gaps in access and engagement. This led to the creation of the Post-Secondary Success Standards, and that was a DMPS K-12 framework that aligns with Iowa college and career readiness definitions. A key piece of this is the Future Pathways Course for grades six through eight, which was developed in-house, giving all middle schoolers structured ICAP instruction. This work is collaborative. Counselors, teachers, coaches, community partners, and more have all contributed. In the school counseling space, we're aligning this work to the role of the school counselor using the ASCA model to deliver consistent, intentional programming. The result is a move from those random acts of guidance to a district-wide system that prepares every student for what's next. So I'm going to have at this time Emma and Zippora come on up. And while they are, I'm going to give you a short history lesson. So when we say the term "school counselor," this is a term that has actually changed from the time that we potentially have gone through the school system. When we think of a school counselor or a guidance counselor, we often think of the individuals that sit in the office and you go to them for career advice, and that might be your interaction with your guidance counselor. That was the early 1900s. We now have actually moved into a new model of school counseling. It wasn't until the late 1990s and early 2000s when the role of a school counselor as we know it now has become standard practice. And as we learned last week, DMPS is leading the charge in the state of Iowa with creating true ASCA-aligned programs. School counselors are key to every student's development, academic success, and future readiness. Unlike the outdated term "guidance counselor," today's school counselors are proactive, data-driven educators who deliver comprehensive, student-centered programs. This shift is supported by the ASCA national model and aligned with DMPS's strategic goals. Counselors support students across three areas: academic development, so goal-setting and learning strategies; social and emotional development, emotional regulation and healthy relationships; and career and post-secondary planning, so exploring careers and creating future plans. In DMPS, counselors provide services through classroom lessons, small groups, academic planning with tools like School Links, and a short-term support for students navigating challenges. They also collaborate with teachers, administrators, and partners as a part of a strong MTSS system. From facilitating wellness meetings to co-teaching advisory lessons, school counselors are essential in ensuring students are supported and are future-ready. So the shift from guidance counselor, bless you, to school counselor has led to us exploring some different opportunities for collaboration with educators. Enter our opportunity to work with the wonderful Ms. Zippora Smith and our CTE department. There was a time when we were writing the Post-Secondary Success Standards, that was kind of living in the counseling world. I ended up sharing that with Tasha Brown and with Jean Bales, who said, hey, we're also revising a class in middle school right now. We need to get you guys together. And Zippora took those standards and ran with them. So she'll talk a little bit more about that process, really why we were working towards that, as we know that the shared work leads to stronger outcomes, which you'll see today. Teachers will reinforce those post-secondary lessons in authentic ways, and collaboration helps to ensure equity and consistent experiences for all students. So with that, I'm going to turn the remote and the microphone over to you.
Okay, so my name is Zippora Smith, and I am currently a Future Pathways teacher. However, I've been with the district, this is my 20th year with the district, and kind of have navigated elementary, and then now I'm in middle school. I would have to say that my passion and dedication, and at times kind of extra, to this program runs deep, as it was sparked by my own personal experience as a parent of the district. My daughter was part of the student body that experienced DMPS prior to this course being designed. And it was not a positive one, that transition from element, or no, sorry, middle school to high school. It's not saying that the teachers and the counselors and everything were not in her corner. Everybody was doing what they needed to do and trying to support her, but it was not adequate, as I do believe it was not adequate for most students. And so here, I happen to be in this outdated business and tech position by fluke, and all of the stars aligned, and now here we are with this amazing program that is truly in its infancy. But with the collaboration, we've seen some pretty amazing things starting to happen with our students, and really hope that we can get that replicated across the district. So.
So I'm Emma Altous. I am one of the school counselors at Merrill. And so I have had the lovely opportunity to be able to collaborate with Zippora, pretty much from the infancy of this. As she took the post-secondary standards and ran with it, we were able to kind of collaborate and work together. And now we get to co-teach for some of the lessons, and it's really fun to get to see the kids really flourish through this work.
All right. So a little bit about, just kind of very quickly, the curriculum creation. It began in 2022. A fellow business and tech teacher and I both were just not, we both were disappointed in what we were currently being asked to teach and felt it was a disservice to our students. So we proposed, and it just happened that the conversations were happening, and again, everything aligned well. And so we started in 2022, really kind of working through and playing around with the standards and seeing how this could fit, how it could support our students in the deficits that we were seeing. So I apologize again to your students who are on the front line of that, learning as we were, they were learning with me. And so what came out of it basically was a 30-hour course for our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. So each one is going to get a quarter each year. And we have topic scales that are really focused on employability skills, social studies, financial literacy standards are in there, and then Iowa's CTE standards are in there as well. The DMPS Post-Secondary Success Standards, so it's going to mirror the program that the counselors are doing quite a bit, or front-load for their program. And then it also centers around the Iowa service areas and 16 national career clusters. We are, it is a working document as we continue to, in real-time, fine-tune things and adapt as the career clusters change or as our students' needs change. We want it to be a living document that really anchors our work. There are very specific original materials and lessons that are created specifically for DMPS. I've drawn a lot on my elementary experiences to take something that is very abstract and try to bring it into a concrete, hands-on learning experience for our students. And then, oh, and then one of my favorite highlights is that the Future Pathways name itself was student-driven. We had students submit, after that first year of implementation, we had students submit ideas for a course name, and then they voted on it. MacCombs Middle School and Merrill Middle School, both those students voted on it, and that is with the winner. So that's always kind of nice to know that the students gave the name to it. And it also has a heavy emphasis on ongoing engagement of families and community partners. So each grade level intentionally builds on the previous experience. Since it's only a 30-hour course, we try to pack a lot into those 30 hours. Sixth grade, we start very foundational and kind of work through just the basic, what are these things that we're looking at? What kinds of careers exist, and how are they organized, to be able to navigate that. It's also students' first experience with School Links, which is the platform we use to house all of the ICAP materials that is able to be accessed by counselors and the teachers and can also go from building to building. So with that high mobility, it's a great opportunity to be able to sync things. It's student-facing, and then families have access.
And then in seventh grade, they get to start to really dive into the course catalog and get familiar with high school terminology, and then they get to build their four-year plan. And that is when Zippora and I really get to co-teach and get to really see kind of all of this come together. And the really awesome thing about School Links is that it is able to translate into any language that Google Translate has the ability to translate into. And so our students can see Course Planner and the course catalog in their language if they are able to read in their home language. So we are able to do that. And then also, when it faces their families, if they, when they engage with their families, their families can read all of it in their home language as well. So that's been really great to bridge that gap as we do the course planning with seventh and eighth graders. And then, so we build their draft with them in seventh grade in the classroom, and then that leads to, as eighth graders, we have to do their four-year plan and their ninth grade course selection as the counselors. And so they already have that draft, and they have that terminology, and they have that language. And so our conversations with students and our time with students is so much richer, and it's so much deeper, because they know what they want. They know what they want, and they know the language. When I say, oh, but we have to get the prerequisite, they know what that word prerequisite means because they've had that. I don't have to sit and take that time, so we can actually have a deep, meaningful academic planning conversation without all that front-loading, because it's taken place in the classroom in seventh grade. And they already have the scale of, or the skeleton of a plan. We're just kind of really making sure that those ninth grade classes are indeed offered by whatever high school they're going to as a ninth grader, and that there's still things that they're interested in, that they, that's what they want. And then if they've selected a central campus class, we can apply for them. So it really makes those eighth grade conversations so much more meaningful and powerful.
Yep. And then the class itself, we continue building on their thought process. If they decide to take a specific career pathway, what does that look like post-secondary? So I talk with the students all the time, I'm planting the... So I talk with the students all the time. I'm planting the seed. I'm trying to help give you the skills so that when you do decide to change your mind, you can pivot. You have the skills. You're not reliant on anyone else to pivot. And you know how our systems work, and you know the vocabulary, so that you can pivot and then reach out to the adult to help you pivot. But you have that power. And so that's a big conversation that we like to have in the classroom about the power of being able to pivot. In addition, we also want to really bring parent guardians into that engagement. And so in the sixth grade, it looks more of like school-to-home conversations where they're taking what we did in the classroom, talking about a specific service area, and maybe a trailblazer for that service area, and they take home something that they did processing that, and then share that and talk about what did they like about that career or service area, how do they see themselves, how do they interact with other people that currently do that? Then they can bring that back to school and look at them like a little piece of candy or something, you know, just something to have, get those conversations. They can hopefully have those conversations in their home language if that's needed as well. So just really trying to get conversations started. And then in seventh grade, when, once we've completed our four-year plan, Course Planner and School Links, I actually have the students email their parents and guardians and invite them with the School Link link to look at their four-year plan and start engaging. And we actually had a parent like who shared a comment, that's what's here, I know it's hard to see. But just, you know, sharing that they can't wait to look at it, they want to, they want to come, you know, and look at it and see what's going on, and they were getting really excited. So that's kind of a cool piece to that.
Yeah, so with School Links, all of the guardians can then sign up for a guardian code. And so again, in eighth grade, we invite them to be part of that. And part of ICAP is that parents have to sign off and approve their four-year plan, and so School Links allows us to do that. It is not something that we have done yet. We are in the infancy of that. We just got those codes. But you can see under the eighth-grade plan here that that is a parent comment. So like the teachers and counselors, we can write comments to students within Course Planner, they can write comments to us, and parents can also write comments back. So it's like a way for all of us to communicate and talk about what's going on in one space, which is very cool.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
So I'm just thinking about when I went through this, some of the course planning with my sons. And what I'm trying to understand is, is is there, is the experience different because they've expressed interest in certain career paths, and therefore it's giving you some potential classes to take? I'm just trying to, like.
Yes and no.
Okay.
So like in the seventh-grade class, it's very tier-one. And very much like we're giving them the introduction to what are the high school DNPS graduation requirements? What do you need to graduate? We want to make sure that that skeleton of plan is going to get everybody on track to graduate in four years, right? You have to have four years of English, you have to have three of math. If you want to go to a four-year university, though, we think, we recommend that you take four years of math. And Zippora does a great job that we're going to put four in the core for everybody so that you can pivot, right? If you decide that maybe I don't want to be a scientist, but you still have your science credits needed. And so they do that, and then when I meet with them as a counselor, that would be when I would say like, well, if you want to be a construction worker, there are these really great skilled trades and construction classes down at campus. Let's get you enrolled in the intro class in ninth grade, and then we'll fill in carpenter or electrician or whatever you're interested in in your plan for subsequent years. They may have done that in seventh grade because they may have found it in the course catalog, and we may have had that conversation already in seventh grade, because we do have those individualized conversations. They may not have, they may have also changed their mind. And so, yes, does that help clarify?
Does, so just like by eighth grade, like when does it definitely happen, right? So if it doesn't happen in seventh grade, what's the backstop?
Yep, and then we do it again in eighth grade, and then it follows them to high school, right? Like the nice thing is that this is, this is a computer program that then follows them to high school. So we are, we're building this plan, and we compare it to a roadmap, right? We're planning the family vacation, and so, but you might, you might get there and you might see that, oh, man, there's a festival this weekend, and that's really cool. And so like maybe you take intro to carpentry, and you're like, oh, gosh, nope, I don't want to do that. But I took Foods I, now I want to take Foods II. So like giving them those skills to be able to change their mind. And they have that plan that says like, this is what I'm interested in. So if they forget, they have the skeleton, and their high school counselor can say like, well, this is what you said before, or is this what you're still interested in? And they can say, yes, absolutely, or no, I took the intro class and I didn't like it. What else might there be?
Great, thank you.
Can I add on to that as well? Starting in seventh grade as well, our students are taking career assessments where they're determining like, what are my pathways of interest? We'll talk more about that in the upcoming slides, but that kind of drives the four-year plan work as well.
And the only other thing that maybe I, we didn't share is that this should, this program is currently in eight of the middle schools. However, it looks vastly different across, and we'll kind of talk about the whys of that, because it is part of the barriers. But in theory, we want, we are in eight buildings right now, so. And it just kind of looks different on buildings, each building, so. All right, then, okay, so I'm not going to read this slide to you, but what I would like for you to just kind of impress upon you, this is the work that is happening around ICAP. There are a lot of experiences and a lot of opportunities that students are engaged in that we work with them in either capacity, either in the classroom or on one-on-one conversations or trips, different things like that.
So the one thing that is on here that isn't happening yet, that isn't our ideal state, is the central campus and academy tours for seventh grade. We aren't there yet. That is our ideal. We would love to take our seventh graders to central campus and academy so that they could tour and they can see what that is. And then in eighth grade, we could do more targeted tours so that they are like, I am interested in the skilled trades, or I'm interested in aviation, and we could just take a group of five or six kids to that specific program, so they could really get to talk to the teachers. Right now, we are just taking eighth graders to central campus, and it is a general tour. For most of our buildings, there are, what, maybe two or three middle schools that do targeted central campus tours for their eighth graders. But that also means then those eighth graders aren't seeing any of the other programs outside of their targeted tour.
Is the barrier transportation and cost?
Yes.
And time.
And time. Time and transportation, because the other thing is, is we're taking them in eighth grade, and we're trying to get it in before we do My App to do the course selection. And so it's just like, it's very, very tricky.
How much is the course application system as it currently stands a barrier? Because we do picking classes really, really early.
Yep.
How much is that a barrier?
A barrier to what?
Yeah, I guess.
To getting all of this in before somebody makes a choice. You have, you have, you know, if I'm a fourth-quarter kid, and I've had to pick my, my classes in December for my freshman year, and I didn't get any of this stuff.
So the nice thing is that we're doing the preload in seventh grade. So then it's not, so then they've already had this, and then that helps that they've had an exposure. And we do talk about central campus in seventh grade as part of the Future Pathways class. Now, they don't get to go and experience it, but they do get to, to talk a little bit about what that means and that there are some programs that they might be interested in.
But are you concerned at all that the fourth-quarter kids get a different experience than the first-quarter kids?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So I think historically, we've always had like cutoff dates as far as like teachers of when you can enroll in programs. And, and the idea is that we want them to be able to pivot, I guess, within like the year, right? So one of the things in seventh grade is we really try to build up a four-year plan that opens up as many possibilities because you're likely going to want to pivot. And then I think like your official change date is a little bit different.
This year it was December 16th.
Is like the last, so, so if that doesn't change, which I know goes into staff, you know, like there's this whole like
The cascade.
Right.
Yep.
But from our, from our program perspective, we are, hopefully, those fourth-quarter students that are in eighth grade, inter-eighth grade, with much more understanding of who they are.
Because of the work.
Right, and so the pivot maybe isn't so large, right? Like it's not such a large swing, it's just a tweaking of some of the classes.
I'd say to Dr. Lundeen and Dr. Roberts, though, like maybe as a future consideration, finding an artificial intelligence or a, some kind of an automated solution for classroom choices and staffing, and to get all of those things that are so complicated together, is there some kind of electronic solution that would help us with the spider web of scheduling that could help us move this down the calendar a little bit? So this excellent program could reach more kids and give them some more time to think.
That makes a lot of people really happy, I bet.
I would think, I would think. I don't know that the one exists, but, you know, just for future consideration.
All right, so this is, I just want to give kind of some highlights of the sixth-grade ICAP activities. So we spent about 13-ish hours focused on the Iowa service areas and helping students understand how nationally we group careers based together, based on skills and interest and knowledge, so that they understand that they don't have to isolate themselves to like a singular career when we're having these conversations, that it's broader than that, and that you can identify a career cluster you're interested in to start gaining some of that skills and knowledge. And then as you get further into your academic career, that's when you start to fine-tune and really pick those specialized classes that will lead you closer to whatever career you end up. So there's some, like 500-some careers that are represented in this cluster framework. And so it gives them a really good opportunity to start digging into it more broadly, and then as they go through their academic career, kind of fine-tune it. We also look at doing just your initial dip into a career research and thinking about, hmm, after I studied that career a little bit, how do I feel about it? Am I like, no way, leaving, running away, never thinking about it again, or am I actually still intrigued? So really just trying to get that element of exploration and thinking about how could this apply to myself and my personal interests and things that I would like to do. There's a lot of hands-on, small-group explorations. The employability skill of small-group work was very foundational to this sixth grade because they were entering middle school, there was mixed groups of students from different elementaries, and we really wanted to build upon that and help give them tangible, soft skills that they would need in the workplace. So that's sixth grade. Seventh grade is where Emma and I spend a lot of time together. We do some assessments on School Links, and then we hopefully will have a Central Academy campus tour. We bring in some resources that Junior Achievement has that are online to kind of do some more inventories and kind of thinking about self. And then we dig into a specific career that we are more interested in learning about. And then we dive in to learning how to navigate Des Moines 72-page course catalog with size 11 font. And this was actually one of my brain childs back in 2022. After I handed a group of students a 72-page catalog of courses and realized how ineffective that was, I literally went home that night and started cutting it up and came up with an opportunity to have color-coded, hands-on manipulatives where they can move the classes around. So there's extra layers in there for students who, like our ML learners and diverse learners, to be able to see the color coding to help them in that initial step with complex processes. In addition, there's like various sizes to the manipulative, so courses that are whole-year-long or longer, then the courses that are only a semester. So again, trying to layer in supports for students as they're navigating this initial task. And then by the time, what was it, like maybe three weeks, by the end of about three weeks, we're able to hand them a blank four-year plan, and they're pretty much ready to go to fill it in because we've just dug in so much. And so, yeah.
Yeah, it's really amazing to watch. I kind of spoke to it earlier, that it's just really amazing to watch. We've had multiple students start to talk about, get really excited about high school and like, what other opportunities are there? And can I really take this, and what am I doing? And we're even starting now to have conversations about the associates program that is an option at the high school, and we have some students that are interested in that now as a seventh grader. And so I'm able to have those conversations. So now we know that because they want to know those names when they go to ninth grade. And so we're able to have those names ready to go. And so the fact that these conversations can happen and we co-teach, so I can have the deeper conversation support, it does most of the, the teaching, and then the kids can ask her a question, if I don't know the answer, she knows the answer. If she doesn't know the answer, I know the answer. And so they're able to get a deeper sense of the, the learning because we're both able to bring our knowledge and skills to the table.
So then eighth, oopsie, so then eighth grade, we really get into then, okay, now you've, again, set that four-year plan. Not, I shouldn't say set, you've drafted one, right? Because this is all about being able to pivot. So just all along, we want our students to know, we're giving you the power to pivot. So then eighth grade, what we do is we start to learn about what post-secondary options might look like. And so they start exploring and thinking more maybe the financial aspects where students have found out a career that they were interested in may not pay enough to meet their lifestyle goals. So then we maybe look in a career cluster and say, okay, what else is there? Or they've found out that school's going to cost them over $100,000 if they don't have any scholarships. So they're like, yeah, no, or I don't want to be in school for 12 years to get this degree. What other things are within that career cluster that is a better fit for me as a learner? And so it's been very powerful conversations, and again, it's helping them get those skills to look at what's out there so that when they're in high school and having to make those like real-life decisions that are really going to impact them as adults, they have the skills to help navigate that.
Quick question. At, this all sounds wonderful. I'm wondering, at which point is the parent or parents involved?
So then when we're, when the four-year plan is done, that's when they email their parent and say, this is what we've been working on. And they invite their parent to then engage with the four-year plan directly. As far as the eighth grade goes, when we're doing the ninth-grade plan, I send out emails to let parents know that this is happening so that they can have those conversations with their students beforehand, but they have access. Once they have their guardian code claimed, so by, this year was kind of a pilot with inviting the seventh-grade parents. So now any of those parents that have claimed that code, they will still have access to that account and to that information, so they have access now through this whole process.
They, meaning?
The guardian.
Okay, guardian, okay.
And the student, like, there's no.
And if I can add even, we'll talk a little bit more about what this looks like outside of middle school too. But one of the cool capacities about School Links as well is that guardian code stays with them through the college search process, through everything. So they can read about Drake and Swahili if they need to. There's college search features, there's job search features, it can translate all of that into home language, and parents have that access, or will when we get it full implementation. We'll have that from seventh grade all the way through their student's 12th-grade year, and kids keep that access even longer as an alumni.
Yep, so this was the first year that we've used School Links to do the course planner for both seventh and eighth grade. So it was kind of a pilot, and Merrill piloted the guardian code for both seventh and eighth grade. And we have had about 25% of our families engage with their kids' course plan.
Compared to zero.
Yep, in the past.
Because people weren't using it. So, and I do think that 25% was only about a fourth of the seventh grade because we didn't have them at certain times, right? And I'm with them right now and building it, right? So we're looking at less than 50% of the seventh grade, and so very positive results so far. Yeah.
And yeah, yep.
My concern is that the students gain the information and parents continue to have access, right? Once they have access to this code. And it seems like students might be able to understand what's going on and the plan and the options. But then it's all on the student to educate the parent, because we're assuming. Because we're assuming that the parent, by just having access, will be able to read it even if it's in their native language, but that they're also going to comprehend. And so then it's a responsibility placed on the student to educate the parents.
Yeah. So one of the things that will kind of continue as we look at that five-year implementation is how do we get additional support staff as well, really knowledgeable about the resources in School Links? So that we can start doing more of that parent education as well. We did start talking about this for middle school transition nights and different things, getting folks connected and then how we're doing that education piece. I talk about it later on, but I did some training for our BFLs earlier this year about how to go into the system. We all got to pretend to be seventh and eighth grade students together. It was a great time. We've done some similar conversations with other work groups too. So definitely something we're not at yet, but are taking steps to try to plan to for the future.
I'm sorry, can I just ask one question around
You bet.
the, the eighth grade experience? I've heard you reference that there are conversations that might pivot their career choice, still maybe within the same cluster based off things like expected salaries and things like that. Or if they don't want to take out a hundred thousand dollars of student loans, which I certainly get. Is there any part within that, that course that talks about these newer tuition assistance programs?
We don't get into, it's a thirty-hour course. So we really don't get into like the very specifics. It's more of a broad exposure to opportunities. So we might talk about, you look at the cost of tuition, know that there are scholarships and different funds and grants out there. And so we talk about it more broadly as what is a scholarship, what is a grant? Like, and then when they were, would be in high school and getting much closer to applying to colleges and things like that, that's when there would be more detailed conversations, I'm assuming.
She summarized the plan well.
Was part of your question not wanting to shut off a pathway, though? Simply a kid might sit there and think, that's too much for my family, so I should choose a different pathway. What in the four-year plan structure, I, I am reminded I ran into Rob Denson tonight and he said, we need to find a way to make sure that more kids know that they can get college credit paid for while they're in high school.
And that is something that we really drive home.
Okay.
In seventh grade and in eighth grade, that like there are opportunities to take college classes at DMPS. And if you're taking them at DMPS, the cost to you is zero dollars. And then we do kind of a math problem.
Is that the associate path you mentioned when you said associates?
That's, that's one, that's one option. But then, yeah, we have lots of dual credit classes that they can enroll in as well.
Erin and Dr. Lundin, I was just going to say, just from a time check perspective, first of all, I want all of you to know how much we appreciate this because it's really, really interesting. And I also just want to be
How much you've done to build it.
Yeah.
Incredibly, thank you for taking initiative, thank you for caring.
But I also just want to make sure you have a better sense of timing than we do, Dr. Lundin. So I'll defer to you, but we probably need to wrap up around eight-thirty-ish, eight-thirty, eight-forty-five.
Okay.
If that works for you.
Okay, I will speed talk. I'm just going to walk you through a little bit of the data, then I've got some other, like, taking a look at kind of the five-year scope. I can leave you with some things to read and then we will exit stage left. So we just kind of within our program have started monitoring different touchpoints. Some of these are related to completing assessments and things, different pieces of the ICAP. As you can see, we are making great growth. Last year we had at least almost eighty-one percent of our seventh graders district-wide had taken a career assessment. We had eighty-five percent in eighth grade that had done that. Whoops, too fast. We had eighty-eight percent of our eighth graders last year that got that one-on-one planning meeting with their counselors. We also are starting to look at sense of belonging for kids because we know that's important when you're coming into a new space. About ninety, we surveyed about seventy-five percent of the class and ninety percent of them were there. Some other interesting stats, really the one that I want to hammer home is that at this point in the year, fifty-one percent of our DMPS seventh and eighth graders have started planning their fourth, like their future coursework. And the different word clouds here, this is actually from Merrill students and what they had to say about the course. So, ideal state, we have started to kind of lay out, this is just the brainchild right now of the school counseling leadership team. We haven't necessarily taken the elementary pieces elsewhere and will be doing so soon. But we've started to lay out what would an elementary scope and sequence look like as well as continuing our seventh, or our secondary sequence. We also have looked at how are we going to build this over those next five years, looking at strategic actions for next year and then continuing to build. Again, I have much more documentation that can take you on that journey as well. As I mentioned earlier, there's been a lot of collaboration and a lot of different professional development to help support teams as we're working through this. This year we had our first collaborative PD between Future Pathways teachers and school counselors where we were able to get together. It was so fun, we had a good time. School Links joined us, it was great.
It was great.
Next steps, we're looking at rolling out communication for Diploma Plus and Ninth Grade On Track initiatives, which will fit nicely into the work that our teams are doing with our classes, looking at realignment of academic planning supports for middle, ML students at the middle school level. We will go really, stop us if you want to through this, but we did as.
And Erin, I want to make sure, I don't want you to go so fast that we lose really salient points. So please don't feel pressured, I didn't mean to put any pressure on you, but just wanted to do a little bit of a time check because Dr. Lundin, I'm not sure the length of which you want to cover.
Okay, someone just tell me when the time is up. I also talk really fast when I get nervous.
And look, the barriers are great. I mean, I think that's kind of what we want to know about, so.
Perfect. Well, the data's cool, we'll move into the barriers. So part of what we did is we did a gap analysis, like what are the things that are standing in our way of reaching this full five-year implementation? One of the things we started looking at was we did a counselor role audit. So we asked elementary, middle and high school counselors, if we're going to put this on your plate, what things need to come off of your plate for those things to happen? I think that's what we've seen in this partnership at the middle school level. We've been able to take that teaching piece, that front-loading of instruction, off of the counselor plate, put it into a more nuanced space and it's led to deeper conversation. So the elementary team, they mentioned that teaching on weekly or rotation, we call it teaching on the specials or teaching on rotation, has implemented, or impacted their ability to be able to move towards program goals. And they were, there were some current concerns about how are they going to do the proposed scope and sequence with that teaching piece?
May I ask a question? So counselors have to fill gaps in classrooms?
Okay, okay. Part of our ASCA model at the, well, at every level, but especially at the elementary level, is they teach tier-one classroom school counseling lessons. So that is the piece where if they are in that rotation, that's taking away from the time. I'm not elementary by nature or by trade, so I don't know a lot of those details, but my elementary team could fill in on what they found. At the high school and middle school level, we found that there were some non-counseling duties, things like scheduling, testing, five oh four coordination, that reduced that amount of time for student services. Concerns about high caseloads making that plan unrealistic and lack of clear role definitions. So what we're looking at to how do we rectify those things, connecting with directors and building leaders to help problem solve and reduce barriers to implementation, continued advocacy regarding the role of school counselors and appropriate versus inappropriate duties. We've explored looking at an advisory model and academic advising to allow counselors to focus on that post-secondary planning and teachers to help support with some of that course selection conversation for the next academic year. Do you want to talk through this one?
Yeah.
This one's yours.
All right, so barrier number two is lack of dedicated PD PLC time. Erin mentioned that we had a collaborative PD, but as a Future Pathways PLC, which is a professional learning community, we need time to work together. Currently, we have fifteen minutes on Monday afternoon to do our PLC meeting. Other teacher, other teachers that are in the building who have, that are not singletons, so we're considered like a singleton because there's only one of us in each building, they're able to meet a lot more.
Did you say fifteen, one, five?
Fifteen minutes.
Thank you.
A week. We've been advocating for the past couple of years to try to find some ways to, with each building having different schedules, to be able to, within our contract time, be able to meet for a forty-five minute chunk of time. We're not there yet and it's, it is the, for me, the biggest barrier for, as a PLC lead, to help train and support the teachers as they try to implement a brand-new program. We don't, we don't have time weekly. Our, our peers are getting, let's see, like, so if we added up fifteen minutes, it'd be like thirteen hours a year. Our peers are getting thirty-three hours a week, or not a week, sorry, in the year. And they also have ninety-six hours that are available to them, would they like to meet. So, so there's a huge discrepancy in the amount of time that is being protected for us to be able to work as a PLC and grow. And I, and I also feel like, you know, if we're under goal three, we're being monitored differently as well and we don't have the supports to be able to put things in action, so. And then another, along with that is the, currently the curriculum on professional development is being written by myself. I'm a full-time classroom teacher and you can imagine that, that leads to something not getting its full potential. And so that has been a challenge and a barrier to help support because we, there's nobody to go into the classrooms who are expert about this work to be able to help, you know, do a site visit and see how implementation's going and help coach them and support the teachers in this journey. And so there isn't a CTE curriculum coordinator that helps with that. And so that is a deficit that we have currently. And again, it's in its infancy, so we know things take time to like pivot and change. And so hopefully we can get some more dedicated time and supports in those capacities. So with the proposed solutions and next steps, we'd love to see more dedicated focus and, and people who aren't necessarily full-time teachers to revise the curriculum for Future Pathways. There is a benefit of being in the classroom though, because we can do that real time, so balancing that, right? Because some of the reasons that it's so powerful is because I can react to what students are needing. And then also that vision of K-12, what's that going to look like and kind of looking at the supports for that. If we're only going to get fifteen minutes a week, we do need some sort of release time as a PLC to go out of our buildings and meet together, that would be equitable. And I know that there's, there's been a proposal that was shared to kind of try and navigate that. So we're hoping that we find some relief with that next year and can really see the payout of that. And then hopefully we can find a long-term solution for that in supporting the teachers in that professional development time that's needed.
I, I really appreciate something you said.
As it relates to being in the classroom and kind of in the moment and, and how that knowledge informs the curriculum development. And earlier we had a presentation on curriculum coordinators. And I think one of the, the questions that I would ask, and this is more broad, but you can answer it specific to you, is how do you actually harness the learnings that you have in the classroom to inform the curriculum so it doesn't feel isolated from reality of what's happening in the classroom?
My, my initial response, so this isn't like long thought out, but would be like a part-time where you are, and this is a nine-week class, right? So like it's not a full year's worth of curriculum that you're talking about, but it's three grade levels. Would be where you're still in, in the classroom for a part of the time as the curriculum is being developed and you're living it and figuring out what needs to happen. And then you have that dedicated time where you can then work with community partners and bring them in. You can work with School Links and get things changed. You can, and so you have that dedicated time to do that instead of, you know, in addition to.
Thank you.
All right, barrier three, this kind of goes into that. The implementation of Future Pathway currently has been relied on CTE grant funding, like Perkins and RPP?
RPP.
Yep, thank you. Not my fiduciary stuff, so. But we are looking at how to transition to, okay, so if it's mostly been grant funding, we know that a lot of those grants are going to be cut drastically. And so how are we going to pivot and help support that and make sure that the true potential of the program can still exist? So, again, district's been great about supporting the implementation, but just really making sure that that lives somewhere. And then during the summer, there's going to be four of us that get together that are really going to try to get the curriculum in a better place because of onboarding of new teachers. Right now, it's really tricky to train because it's not complete. And so we'd like to have it in a better place that it's still a working document, but it's more accessible to people who aren't actually teaching it. I think, oh, which is basically kind of piggybacks with barrier four, which is, as of when we were typing this, we don't know exactly what sixth grade is going to look like through these transitional years, which then again, piggybacks with not having a curriculum that we can very efficiently support teachers in onboarding and training. And so one of the, currently as of right now, there isn't training that is designed or set in stone. And so just really making sure that we come up with processes for that, for the teachers who are going to be teaching this. So there is consistency over the course of elementary and middle schools, no matter what school you are at. Yes, that teacher's going to bring their teacher vibe into that space, but we want to make sure that it's equitable for all our students. Because it can be so powerful for them.
If sixth grade is in K-six, are you still advocating for the same type of activities that you had showcased? Just, you just do it in sixth grade and you're affiliated with an elementary school?
A hundred percent, because it's basically the foundation for the rest of the program. And so we're advocating for thirty hours of sixth grade programming that would be delivered in very similar methods. The system might look different, right? Or the time, maybe it's going to be more hours together, one, you know? And so that's still kind of being worked out, but it would be very difficult for us to do our job in seventh grade if they did not come to us with a solid foundation.
And for our expanded sixth grade campuses and elementary, that is what we are operationalizing on now to ensure that we have the Future Pathways course in sixth grade in those schools.
Thank you.
We did through our gap analysis, find some additional barriers. We really kind of highlighted the top of mind ones through our time together today. So there's some additional things that we're continuing to try to work through. We've taken a look at trying to utilize the standard, standardizing our utilization of School Links, figuring out trainings, PD, connecting with Wayfinder, which is our SEL curriculum. And then working as well with curriculum coordinators for how can we embed these skills across all content areas, not just during advisory or during Future Pathways classes as well. Continued communication with staff regarding our ICAP goals. There we are on February tenth when we had our time together for our PD at Lincoln and continued collaboration with district-level coordinators. We, I meet pretty regularly with some of our other folks to just kind of talk about how we can implement this as a whole. So I just want to say thank you for the time together. I know that we took a lot of it, but I appreciate the opportunity to share and the willingness of my two counterparts to share as well.
And are open to future questions as well.
I just wanted to say thank you for bringing, you brought some barriers, but most of the time you also had a suggested solution. And I would lift that up as, like, I, I for one on this board, I'm really, really happy to see you thinking in terms of what can we do, not what we can't do. And how are we going to get this done in a way that is sustainable? So I just, I really would lift that up as a highlight all the way through that presentation, was how are we going to get this done? Not all the ways it's not going to happen.
Yeah, it really feels like there's a lot of thought and work that was put into it. And that makes a big difference. So thank you, gracias.
In, in the world of no stupid questions, I'm just going to ask one. So I have to admit, as I was thinking about discussions about middle school and changing the middle school experience and things like that, I thought about it less from a lot of planning and discussion perspective and more of a experiential in the sense of like, I'm doing STEM learning or I'm doing, you know, cooking or something, like, you know. or I'm doing, you know, cooking or so, like, you know, some of the, going back to some of the traditional, uh, you know, tech classes and things like that. And so I both love this, and I guess I would ask, are there, is there anything that complements the, um, yeah, complements the middle school experience that actually allows young people to either build skills or see what they like? You know, like, oh, I love IT, or, and, and so if you don't mind teaching me that, that would be great.
So, um, we, part of, uh, part of our plans is we are working with, uh, Forest Avenue Outreach, um, and we're trying to create traveling trunks, and we've got some of the trades that are involved with it. And the idea is to have these trunks that teachers can check out that would allow students to interact with materials that people would use in their profession and kind of have like a little exploratory event, right? Um, and then kind of reflect on that, take that home, kind of talk with the parents, things like that. And so, um, that is something that we would like to grow to. There just hasn't been the capacity to currently do that. Um, but we do have people in line and some, and some beginnings of that. So that would be an ideal state for our sixth-grade course.
Yeah, and tha-, and that's great. And I think just, you know, maybe Dr. Roberts, this is broader because it's connected to reimagining education, but the, um, the, the other experiences that kids will get in middle school, um, in addition to all of this, you know, whether it is a, like, like I said, like a IT or are there other specific types of classes that are gonna be offered to kids in middle school that are, um, that are skill-building?
Certainly, um.
Because we don't have, I don't think we have a lot of those anymore, because we had to cut those.
We, we certainly are not limited in the options that we want to expose our students to. But again, that's a part of how we're gonna reimagine our middle school experience to students.
One of the things that you had talked about was how do you get middle-school students to central campus to see all these things? And I do think there's a value in seeing it and how cool it is, you know? Um, this is a great building to show off. One of the things I'd lift up for you is lowering barriers for leaders who are at Central Campus and Academy to come to the junior highs, because right now, there are some barriers to that. And, um, so how do we teach some leadership to our, our high school students to get them to help recruit middle-school students to their same experience? The best, the best people to sell the experience to the people who are going through it and who are passionate about it, so.
Yes, I also did know what Patrick was saying about that. Um, when I, many, many, many years ago, when I was at Central Campus as a student, um, they even came to us at the junior highs and doing, um, just in assembly. And I know, you know, everything's kind of cut short, but things like that. One thing that kind of concerned me, uh, it was mentioned that this is not consistent in all the junior highs. What do you feel that is leading up to that?
I think this is one of the first times, um, I would say this year, we've been able to really get together and have the collaborative professional development. I've been able to go in and work with middle-school leaders, too, to say like, let's rally the troops, right? We all need to work together to make these things be lifted up. So I would say just the opportunity now to be able to connect. We've seen a drastic increase in our growth in the last quarter, I would say, since we had that February PD regarding the number of assessments that are being completed, the number of just activities and things that are coming through, because we had the time to get together.
And you have standards, right? So everybody's held accountable to, like, a framework of standards.
Yep.
I would also suggest this is one of these situations where historical patterns of loose versus tight autonomy within schools plays a role and where, at least un-, under the principal supervisors that are working with our middle schools right now, we're having these common conversations around, these are the non-negotiables around what the counselor role should in, include or entail there. And that's gonna be a continued work to make sure that we're normed across the ten campuses.
Sephora. Yeah. Um, can you, you mentioned that the post-secondary, or excuse me, the, um, the post-secondary success standards are K through twelve. Can you tell me, it sounds like you've unpacked those standards, you've created learning targets, you've created the, um, activities, assessments, et cetera. How, at what levels have you done that work? Sixth, seventh, and eighth grade? And, um, I guess we'll start there, yeah.
Um, so the, the post-secondary standards were created and kind of handed to me and a, another teacher that were working on it. We took a broad look at what was happening in K-five and in, like, just K-12, actually, we took a broad look. And then we said, okay, if we know where they're, they should be coming from, and we know where they should be going, now let's isolate six, eight, and really build a strong program there, because that was, that was our, right? Like, that's, that was our focus, um, as middle-school teachers. I know that Erin maybe could speak more to, I mean, like, the, the, there's the foundation there to be able to build that out, K-six.
For sure. And in the elementary space, we do, um, through our counseling Tier-One instruction that is part of our model, we do go in and we unpack for each grade, um, I want to say, three to four different post-secondary standards. And for that, we've come up with some, here's some common vocabulary that everybody needs to know. Um, if you're familiar, this came from my time as a teacher. We really unpacked and did the KUDs. What do kids be able to know, understand, and do? That has been done for grades K through twelve, but in terms of implementation or things, we just have really been able to dig into that sixth-grade space. Does that help?
It does, yes. And what I'm hearing is that this, a lot of what's been developed has come from your passion and your fire, for, for lack of a better word. Is there, is there something that the board can do to support you, whether it's an already pre-research-based, you know, curriculum that exists that has all of this unpacked already, um, that would then just require, um, professional development? I'm not saying just required as, that's, that's also a large undertaking. However, um, knowing the urgency that the board has behind this particular goal, what currently exists that, um, you know, can we help, help advocate or fund? Or, you know, look at other, which I am, I'm just so excited to see the, some of the photos that you've shared and the results that you've shared and, um, the excitement that you are, are building in this, in our students who perhaps have never thought beyond where their feet are currently. So thank you for creating those opportunities for our students.
Yeah, I appreciate that question. Um, I, I think, um, we are, everyone that I've interacted with and the team that I've been working with, um, we've really been strong advocates that we want it to be a very DMPS-driven curriculum. And so it's very difficult to find something that would support our students in the way that we know they deserve. Um, and so, there have been pieces and elements of some different programs that we've used that are like open resources that we've used as teachers to bring in, to kind of take off or take some of that lift, right? Um, but we really want it to be rooted in, um, for our students. And we know that we just can't find that in the CTE world especially. Um, it just doesn't really exist if it's good, it's not quality, really, so.
Thank you for that, and, and I, I've been on teams that, and have unpacked standards and curriculum, and the amount of work that goes into making that happen in a, in a manner that you have described in this presentation is no small lift. So, um, thank you. I appreciate you being thoughtful about serving our population and, and ensuring that, um, you're doing this in a successful manner. But I know that, you know, one grade level worth of curriculum oftentimes takes a year to unpack and create what you've just described that you've created for DMPS, so thank you.
Ms. Materano, just a clarifying question, or actually to all of you. So that model where you had the six circles, or maybe there were three, SEL? Well, you probably know the other two.
Academic and career in post-secondary planning.
So this idea of like structure-following strategy, so how, because you're responsible, when I say responsible, you need to be knowledgeable for all of that. And, and so when, when you talk about curriculum, it's like a blended curriculum of all of those things, kind of?
So that diagram was really showing what the counselor expertise is in, in all three of those areas, and how that's different maybe from what we've experienced with counselors is it used to be much more focused in that only that career in post-secondary pathway or academic pathway. So really, that means when we're thinking about role and function and different demands that are put on the team, anything that's in those circles is something that Emma can be called on to help with in the course of a day.
And so Dr. Lundin, then, just from a structure perspective, I, are all of the, remember there were the six circles? Those, are those now all under, um, generally under the academic officer?
Yes.
And so those, there's a, there's a focal point that all those things are now working together, of which also inform the work that you're doing.
Absolutely.
Just a question about priority. You bring up the circles and that Venn diagram of putting them all together, the social-emotional health of our students. We are giving you, um, conflicting directions as a board because we have a guardrail about social-emotional health, and we have this real big priority about, we want that career training. Um, and I just, I'm asking this out of ignorance, how much does having a sense of purpose and forward movement help a student's social-emotional? Do we know that, or do we have, do we have research behind that? How much are we helping by pushing career, is what I'm saying, to alleviate maybe trouble with social-emotional?
So I don't know that we have a way to measure that at this point, but I think through our conversations, um, we can see the excitement. Um, when we were making this presentation, I talked with Sephora about one of, um, our eighth-grade students who last year was kind of a bump. Um, and then he got pretty excited doing the four-year plan in seventh grade, future pathways. He found out that he would get to take some of those central campus classes. He wants to either be a construction worker or a mechanic. And so he got really excited seeing those classes. So when I had the conversation this year and we started to do that for your planning, he was over the moon and so excited and could not wait. Um, and he has been very much more engaged in school this year. Um, he has, there's been a shift. So like, I mean, that's one story, like, we don't have a good measure. But I would say, when there's excitement and they're engaged, they're, they're excited to learn and they're engaged in learning, right? Like, that helps boost both their academics and their emotional well-being.
I remember back to those days where my kids would come home and say, I don't know why this matters, in middle school. I'm not sure why this matters. And I, that, I think is what you're saying, connecting it to that.
So if it's okay, that was like the perfect note to?
End us.
End on, but Dr. Roberts, do you want to make some closing comments on this piece and then set up the next piece?
Yep, certainly to echo the board sentiments, just tremendous gratitude um, to this team and our auto-counselors, the work that they are doing, um, not only in support of Goal Three, but just in general. It's nothing short of a human's task. And so we are gonna continue to commend them. And I know that I've said publicly and will reiterate that, um, we certainly are a long way off from, um, the ASCA-recommended ratio of counselors to students. And, and, um, you know, and responding to what remember Materano was earlier, ask, um, as you always do, how can the board be helpful? We need to really be thoughtful about reallocation of resources with intentionality to, um, make it less burdensome, so that they can optimize all the skills that they have.
Yeah, fifteen minutes is not enough.
Yep.
So if we were to put you on the spot and just ask, what can be done in FY twenty-six? If you have recommendations, doesn't have to be tonight, I think that would be very helpful.
I certainly will have some. I'll come back to the board, um, before we get into the next school year with some recommendations about how to at least, um, shore up FTEs in terms of our counseling teams.
I do have some additional questions. Should I direct those to you, Dr. Roberts?
Yes, please, Dr. Lundin and I, yeah, thank you.
If I could offer one comment, just, and to say thank you again, but around the calibration and the definition and the role of a counselor, I think that was really important and really appreciated for you to do, because I do think sometimes, even as board members, we get in our own ways of thinking we know what a job does, because that's what it looked like when we were in school. So I really appreciate you calibrating and telling us, this is what the job actually is responsible for today. So thank you.
I would be remiss if I didn't give some thanks to Erin Cugarcavassos, who has been instrumental on the Goal Three Committee. What you're seeing here are the makings of a universal DMPS language related to what we've been talking about with Diploma Plus in the first place, around where kids want to get to and how they want to get there. And the vision that's gone into thinking through how this manifests itself into concrete course opportunities on the middle-school level, and then stretching it back to elementary and even pre-K has been a huge inspiration and, um, a great source of gratitude, so I wish to thank you.
Thank you.
Well done.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Recognizing that we have limited time, I would propose, I really would like for you all to hear from Dr. White when it comes to ninth-grade on track. The last two sections that we had proposed tonight, one is, uh, Ms. Sturgis, who is looking over goal language, but, uh, and then myself providing a short update on Diploma Plus, uh, implementation, both of which are in writing there. Uh, I would, if we give Dr. White, uh, the floor so that he can speak, and then if the determination is made that there's final questions and then closing out from there, would that be appropriate?
That sounds wonderful, and I'm just leaning over to Dr. Roberts. And I think it's, what I would say is, it's up to you to clear the things that you need to clear tonight with the board. So, uh, we clearly can talk about this forever. So I think, uh, Dr., welcome. Been wondering who the gentleman was lurking in the back. So, uh, for fun, is he here for fun? Um, so, Dr. Roberts, Dr. Lundin, I'll let you set it up.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Lundin. That's a good cadence, and so let's proceed with it. Thanks, Dr. White, you've been here.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks for having me. Um, Chris White, I am your ninth-grade on-track coordinator. I'm really excited to talk through some of the, uh, work we've been doing thus far this year to prepare for next year. So I'm going to very briefly go over some of our foundational research that's informing our work and tie that to, um, what that means in DMPS with some of our ninth-grade data, and then talk specifically about the what and the how and the shifts we're making for next year. So our work, ninth-grade on-track work, is based on some foundational research out of Chicago in the early two thousands. They found that ninth grade is the most predictive year of school for graduation. Ongoing research out of Chicago and other urban districts continue to find that early intervention of academics and attendance in ninth grade leads to higher graduation rates directly. We also know from this research that academic performance in ninth grade is a stronger predictor of graduation than race, socioeconomic status, and even prior test scores and prior academic achievement. And then finally, the research continues to tell us, um, ever since this foundational research, that schools that focus on ninth grade support see the highest improvements in graduation rates. And so here in DMPS, this is our why. When we're talking about ninth grade and looking at our graduation rates, this is obviously not new for us. We know that our graduation rates are hovering around this seventy-two, seventy-three percent, um, which really shows us that we are, um, losing a good portion of our students. We also know that the more failures we have in ninth grade, the more resources we have to pour on the reactive end when we're talking about summer school, um, credit recovery, and even, um, seats as students need to retake classes. So that is our why. But what does it mean to be on track? Well, in DMPS, a student is considered on track at the end of ninth grade if they have earned at least five credits and failed no more than one semester of a core class. Now, I need to say, that is obviously not our goal for our ninth-grade students. Uh, we expect, um, we expect them to do the best that they can, which is hopefully passing all of their classes, getting seven credits. But what we needed to find for this measure, for this metric, rather, was a measure of minimally adequate performance. More or less, what is the minimum a student can do in ninth grade? This'll be very, very likely to graduate within four years. And this is where I get a shout-out, Josie and her team, Bridget, uh, in particular, for helping us find what that means for DMPS. So again, for us, that is at least five credits, no more than one semester core F, core being English, math, science, and social studies. And when we apply that measure to the last couple of years, this is what we see. Students who were on track in ninth grade graduated at rates of eighty-six, eighty-seven, and last year, ninety-three percent, compared to students who didn't meet that minimum mark, graduating at rates of thirty, thirty-seven, and a jump. graduating at rates of 30%, 37%, and a jump last year at 57%. When we take that three-year data and combine it into a three-year total, we see that students who were on track in ninth grade, 88.1% of them graduated on time compared to just 43.6% of students who are off track. Here's that same data. Put another way, students who are on track in ninth grade were more than twice as likely to graduate within four years. Students who are off track in ninth grade were five times more likely to not graduate on time. And so, how have we been doing? Here are our last several years of on-track. So these are ninth graders. So you can see last year, 47.6% of our students were on track in ninth grade. All students is indicated by that blue line in the middle. So you can probably see right away that we have some disparities in terms of demographics. You can see race indicated by the dotted lines. These gaps mirror some of those discrepancies that we see across our system. This means that that needs to be at the forefront of our planning as we roll out our ninth-grade on-track supports. Second, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, Dr. White.
Just a clarification. So, 47.6% of all ninth graders are defined as on-track?
On-track, last year's ninth graders, correct.
That's serious.
Absolutely. And you can also see that there's a pretty substantial dip there during that COVID year that we have not recovered from. And so, that's the why. The research shows definitively that a focus on ninth grade will increase our graduation rates. And clearly, we know that ninth grade is an area of improvement for us. And so, here's the what. We have identified nine major areas of focus for our ninth-grade on-track efforts. You can see the top three there are our current focus areas going into next year. The bottom six are our future areas of focus. So when we talk about quality instruction, that's when we're talking about our GLEAM framework, so ensuring that our students have access to instruction that is on-grade level, engaging, affirming, and meaningful. That's a focus right now and will continue to be a focus. We talked about that on-track metric, so using that data point to inform our data-driven decisions when we're talking about the experience of the ninth grader. And then the biggest shift going into next year is this idea of ninth-grade success teams. And this is where that house model comes in that you've heard about. So ninth-grade success teams are the foundation for effective on-track practices. We know this from the research and from the proven practices of districts all across the country. We know that the most sustainable gains for ninth graders are seen when schools can develop highly-functional collaborative teacher teams that have the opportunity to focus on specific students that those teachers share. So to ensure that we have the structures put in place to have effective ninth-grade success teams in our buildings, we are going to team or house our teachers and students together within the building so that four core teachers, math, science, social studies, English, all share the same roster of students. The shift is to a structure that will allow our teachers to talk to each other about the specific students that they share. And these structures obviously don't exist right now. We do not currently have a system for teachers to talk to each other about the individual student experiences across the school day. We do currently have structures for teachers to collaborate with each other around what and how they teach in groups of teachers that teach the same class, but we don't have the structure for them to collaborate around who they teach. And so, we know that ninth-grade success teams will provide teachers with these opportunities to discuss the achievements and challenges that their students are experiencing. And since they are shared students, they can collaborate with each other to support those students and their success. And this has always been a goal. This is not a new thing that we're trying to have happen. We, of course, want teachers to talk to each other about students that they share. But we have not yet had that systemic structure in place to be an easy process, and that's what the house model is going to bring us.
Dr. White, and maybe you're going to get to this. There seems to be a whole other infrastructure that would support this model, right? So I think if attendance is an issue or if you have kids with IEPs, like, how does the support infrastructure work in this, if at all?
I actually think it's my next slide.
Okay.
Mind reader. So the ninth-grade success team, yep, or the house team, will be comprised of those four core teachers plus an associate principal, so they all share the same students. The team will be led by a teacher leader who will receive a stipend and training to run that team. But then that team will collaborate regularly with others in the building who focus on student support. So that's where we get the lens of the instructional strategies for special education, ELL interventionist counselors, I think, and even our success when we're talking about attendance. Does that answer your question? Yeah. And so, when that team meets that house team, here is a list of things that the house team will be able to accomplish. Certainly not going to read through all these. But the list includes things like determining universal expectations and routines for students that can be standardized across multiple classrooms. Our students go to seven or eight different classes each day, which means that there is a potential for seven or eight different expectations, routines, even language about learning. Getting teachers together to standardize these across multiple spaces can really ease that transition into high school for our ninth graders. Another big thing that these teams will do is collaborate around interventions that can help get students back on track if they have fallen off track. And since they're talking about students that they share, they can work as a collective to support the students that they have instead of working as individuals. And so, again, the research is clear. Ninth-grade success teams are a proven practice for increasing student achievement in ninth grade and therefore for increasing graduation rates. Without teaming students in a house model, that opportunity to have effective, efficient, and regular ninth-grade success teams really diminishes, especially at our larger schools where we have so many teachers teaching the same class. And so, that's the big shift going into next year. There are a couple of considerations that are top of mind for us that I would be sure to mention. I know that this is a concern for the board. But what are we asking of our teachers and what do we put on their plates? This is also a huge concern for us as well. And we are hoping to address this in three ways. The first is preparing for the shift. I am working with our building leaders to make sure that those conditions and structures are in place right away at the beginning of next year so that these teams can be effective immediately. And then also preparing staff, especially those team leads, so that they can feel efficacious about the work. The second thing that we're doing to address what we're asking of teachers is we're not actually taking more time away from teachers. So teachers already have collaboration time built into their schedule, high school teachers. Like I mentioned earlier, they use that time right now to meet with other teachers who teach the same class so they can talk about what and how they teach. So now, we're going to add that ninth-grade success team or that house team into that same time so they can talk about who they teach. So it's all this time that's already allotted for collaboration. We're not, for instance, taking away from their planning time. And then the third thing-
Just to clarify, we are kind of taking away, if you're adding time, you are kind of taking away from their planning time, aren't you? Like, if-
Just adding another response.
It's shortening the time that you can do either one of those two things, right?
Yes, we will have to balance these two teams, yeah. So our teachers get 45 minutes a day for collaboration, 45 minutes a day for personal planning. We're still sticking in that 45 minutes of collaboration. So what we will have to do is balance the asks of that first collaboration team with the teachers who teach the same class, and now we're adding this.
Dr. White, as you've run this past teachers and others, I'm wondering what kind of feedback you're getting, the good and the not-so-good.
Well, of course, that we're asking another thing of them is a concern, but we're also getting a lot of excitement for the structure. Teachers are excited to have the structures in place to work collaboratively and together to address the needs of their students, for sure. Something that other districts have done, districts who have really strong on-track practices, is they actually have their ninth-grade teachers teach one less period so they can have two full-time collaboration teams. This is not, at least right now, a reality for us. So until it is, we are going to have to balance the asks of these two teams, balance the time that we're asking teachers to dedicate to this with what we know is best for students and what our kids need. Then the last thing that I want to mention is ninth-grade on-track work is not and cannot work in isolation. We are moving forward alongside the other current areas of focus. So for instance, ninth-grade on-track work strengthens and is strengthened by our Diploma Plus rollout for next year and ongoing. And we're really excited for how this can mesh with our ICAP goals that you just heard from. That's the big shift for next year.
Do houses stay together all four years in that their sophomore year? That same group of kids is still grouped together? Are we only going to do this for ninth grade because that's the critical year to do it?
Our current plan is for this to only be in ninth grade, not to continue up through high school.
Any research that shows that keeping them together works?
Course diversity makes it a challenge.
Oh, I see, okay, okay. Can't do what we just talked about with this.
I really appreciate this and the depth of thought. And I've seen other cities that have, and we've even tried it, kind of this ninth-grade standalone. And I think about reimagining education, and we've been talking a lot about just innovation and piloting and trying different things. And I'm just, I'm wondering how, if at all, if that is even research-based, DMPS is thinking about that as one potential strategy, like a standalone ninth grade?
I think it's definitely something that we're considering, but-
Does the research bear it out, though? I mean, I think that's really actually the question for you, which I wouldn't-
I think it's, my sense is it's mixed. I've not gotten a sense that the sort of separate ninth-grade academies, I think there is value in having that, I think. But we're looking at limiting the number of transitions that we're looking to have throughout the course of a student's academic career. And so, having those ninth-grade teachers in sync with what's going on with the rest of the high schools so that students can see that is important.
Thank you.
Do all of our high school kids have homeroom time? Or is there no, there's no homeroom time? So there's no opportunity for an advisory period, for instance?
The advisory is something you can see in the 26, 27, and beyond. It's something that we are aspiring for in our high schools. We're not quite there yet in terms of being able to standardize that structure.
I mean it in terms of keeping an advisory. I think Valley did this, I think Valley tried this, where they keep, you get an advisor your freshman year, that's your homeroom, you carry that advisor through all four years, and that's your first period of the day where you go with the same group of kids, all four. I just don't, again, given what we were talking about with career pathways and stuff, the complexity of our district, I'm just not sure that's a model that works, but-
It's worth looking at.
Dr. Roberts, as you've kind of listened to this presentation, is there anything that you want to add or encourage us to think about? Or Dr. Lundin, specific to this topic or board members' questions?
No, I think the work that Dr. White and I are leading is certainly, we've seen in a lot of other districts, when the research first came about, it was published in 2007, major school systems across the country embarked upon the ninth-grade academy model. And while the results have been mixed, there are opportunities for the ninth-grade academy model to work. But I think our approach is one that allows us to sort of have much more of a gradual biting off of the structure. Again, we will come back in a year or two. Certainly, we'll progress monitor along the way, but in a year or two, we should have a body of research and a data set that suggests we've either moved the needle or we have not. But the work that we've embarked upon here is really groundbreaking.
One thing I have to compliment both Dr. White and the Director of High School Teaching and Learning, Taylor Corley, for is high school principals can tend to be very protective of the structures within their school. Chris and Taylor have earned the hearts and minds of these principals within this school to the point where they have rallied around a unified plan and embraced it as their own. That is no small feat and is a great predictor of where we're going to go with this work moving forward.
Great, thank you.
I'll just ask if there's, just to keep the theme consistent all the way through the meeting tonight, what private supports, if any, have other districts used to support this work in ninth grade? How can we piggyback that on to what we're trying to do with getting a student on a career, on a path in high school and make them, you know, continue that structure that they pick up in middle school?
You're asking about private-
Private supports. What have other cities done that have, you know, have there been obvious partners that have been really great and have supported this work and that we wouldn't think about?
There have been. I've been talking a lot with Philadelphia, who have really strong ninth-grade on-track practices. They have really strong business partnerships that help to fund a lot of this work, for sure. I have met with, and I've been talking with Kaylee to kind of put feelers out on how we can expand our partnerships to help with this work.
Thank you.
I appreciate just the thought of wanting to do something different. I mean, we don't know if it'll work, but there's a possibility that it can work and you have to try things in order to see that. I know that there may not be a lot of research for it right now, maybe, but what I will share is higher ed has been doing this for a while with academic cluster of students, and it is a proven model. And they typically do it with first-year students, put them in cluster groups, whether that's by discipline, which doesn't work as well in a K-12 system, or other targeted populations. And it does work well. I mean, so I'm glad to see it.
I do want to clarify, for what we're talking about with clustering and teaming students, there is a lot of research, and we are very confident that it will work. I think we don't have a lot of research on ninth-grade-only buildings.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, got it, okay. Oh, this will work. Yeah. Excited.
I want to thank Dr. White and Ms. Corley-
Thank you.
-who have done amazing work. Recognizing that we are short on time, we've got two things that are in writing for you and that we're glad to provide you feedback in writing if that would be amenable to you. One is proposed Goal Three language that Ms. Sturgis has prepared with various data points related to Goal Three. And we would be glad to come back and discuss that in greater depth at the time of your choosing.
I think that'd be great. Can you help us, like, timing-wise, right? So, I mean, obviously, we know we want to have these done by June, right, at the latest. But what would be your, right, so if we were going to, because I think we're going to want to have a longer conversation about it, can we do that in May? Because that's probably the, and we can probably do it in early May. Is that too late?
I would say the timeline's yours, so.
If I may, Madam Chair, ultimately, the goal is to make sure that by the time we get to the last day of school in June, we have clarity and almost finality around goal language, interims. And so, I think what we are going to propose to offer tonight will get us closer towards that final sort of goal language.
So it sounds like you're suggesting talk about it a little now. Is that right, what you're saying, Dr. Roberts?
I would certainly have the board make that decision. I, you know-
Can we do like 10 or 15 minutes on this topic and just at least socialize it? And then it can be sent to us and people can digest it and read it, and then we come back together in May? Ms. Matarano, you have comments?
Yeah, I was just concerned about the timeline that was previously mentioned, knowing that we have received budget presentations that are specific around allocating funds and resources based on this current proposal. So I think that they go hand in hand, and I would like to see us discussing this sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I think the board probably needs to talk with Dr. Roberts about the pickle that we seem to be in, which is a deadline to get the budget approved. And not everything's completely costed out. And so, I think one suggestion might be that potentially we come back together, and I don't know when that is, in June or July, and better understand the budget in the context of the goals, since we don't necessarily have all the specifics. Alternatively, we have to return back to the conversation that we had last week. which is asking for a far more greater understanding of the specificity of the budget and how it aligns to goal accomplishment. So I, I'm really open to either. I just am not sure that I've heard that you feel like you can get there in time, Dr. Roberts. Like given all the, some of the outstanding details.
No, I believe we, the team is poised to get there in time and I certainly value the board's willingness to probably have some flexibility. Don't know, as I'm thinking about effectiveness, if, what kind of sort of appetite and energy the board has right now to receive the depth of presentation that we would like to share, but to board member Marterano's point, sooner that and later is better for all of us. So you can have this information in order to make informed decisions.
I, I, you know, I, I'm, I could keep going. So I really need other board members to speak up.
I, I, I'm going to need to leave, so.
I, I, can I, can you teach me? Cause I, I want to make sure we're saying the same thing. So, and if Shashank were here, he sometimes. So we've been given a budget for goals and guardrails and asked a fair amount of questions. I don't think we kind of approved or settled on it. Mostly because it seems like there's some unknowns, right? There's just a lot of unknowns. And so I'm trying to figure out how to both get a budget approved by April 30th, recognizing that I don't think we have all the details and I'm not sure we're going to get there. Because we only have, we're like, this is it. We have tonight.
I think there was a tentative hold on a Tuesday at the end of the month, if it was needed in regards to budget. Is that an accurate statement?
It's, it, the 22nd.
It hasn't been scheduled.
The 22nd is held. I think it's really a question for the board to better articulate what it's looking for. Cause I think we, we tried that and maybe we didn't hit the mark last week and clearly articulating what we were looking for. So I, I think what I would say is if we're going to meet on April 22nd, what are we looking for?
And I want to be cautious getting into too much budget conversation when it was not something that we were scheduled to discuss tonight.
But they align. I mean, resources align to goal three. So I don't think we're too far off. I just, but I do, I do think if we're just because I, I want, I'm trying to, Dr. Roberts and, and Skylar and I have had some really good conversations about last week's conversation and how we, at the end of the day, I think the board's just looking to see the alignment between the strategic plan and the goals and guardrails and the budget. And, and so what would we need for goal three specifically to feel like resources were aligned to the goal? And I, I need my board colleagues, I'm going to use some wait time here just to.
I'm going to try to articulate this. For me, it was connecting the dots to, I think one of the things about tonight's presentation that was really great is that I saw what was going to build over time and how that plan, like I can see all the way through to the end and it made some sense to me. Where I am having trouble with this year's budget is I am sure that it was put together thoughtfully to meet our goals and guardrails. I'm not seeing step one and where it gets us to step two, three, four and five. And maybe that's the way to, to, to maybe do a little bit of storytelling about why some choices were made in order to get to the programs that we are building over time and that it will get done. My fear is, and I'll just sort of be vulnerable about like where I'm sitting is my fear is we will get to next year and still be talking about the same stuff we're not have built because we didn't have the resources in the right places. To the extent that I can be supportive of and a guardrail for you and the staff, it's to push us to push, push the money and the resources to the goals. That's it.
And I just, I'm just going to ask Ms. Marterano, only because I think you articulated it and, and, and the kind of earlier rather than later. So can you help just add some context to, to what it is you feel we need to do to get, to get to the hurdle to feel prepared for a budget, supportive of a budget?
I feel ready to support the budget. I just want to make sure that that budget aligns with the measures that you are presenting to us or that are in this presentation. And so when we, when we look at the budget presentate, presentation that we received from Dr. Roberts and team and Shashank, I feel confident that the strategies that you've outlined are going to align with the reaching our goal, but understanding what those interims are going to look like and understanding what the actual measures are going to look like will, will give me more confidence in saying yes. So I think, I think having, having an understanding, we haven't dived it. We haven't done a dive into what the goal would actually look like outside of X, Ys, Zs and alphas and betas and exactly, so.
The placeholders.
Exactly.
So certainly I think it would be prudent if we can find a date that is specific to, I don't know if it has to be another date. Probably put it on the agenda 30 to 45 minutes for the board to get this deeper dive into the last two parts of tonight's presentation. Because certainly it's a long day. I want the board to be attentive and engaged and I know that you will be, but I want to be thoughtful about the timing and if we can probably pun that in order to meet exactly what both you, Madam Chair and Board Member Marterano and Mr. Dix are articulated. We, we're, we're going to be, we're ready to do it.
So I'm going to propose that we, on April 22nd, and I, I know we have to meet on the 22nd because it's a, can you do the 22nd? And we have to do the 22nd.
22nd virtually.
Yeah. And we had kind of established that it, it, it could be virtual. But potentially maybe what we do is the deeper dive and then maybe a recap of the budget.
Yeah. And I'm just going through some of these slides, you know, scanning them. There aren't any interim recommendations. Is that an accurate state?
That is accurate. What we had, so the intent tonight was to just provide you with a recommended goal three language. And then once the board kind of had an opportunity to review that, give any form of positive assertion around that, then we would have interims. So if we're going to move to that 22nd date, that would be, just be my one request is that if you would like interims, just if you have concerns about the goal as it is, to, as it has been proposed here, to let me know so that we can make any adjustments to those proposed interims before you see kind of the whole package.
Yeah, let me offer, thank you for that, Josie. That's very helpful. So let me offer that we can, the board have, the board now has access to the goal language. Is there a way for the board, for board members to sort of have a discourse via written communication around your year nay of the goal language?
Can we just, can we just put it on next week's agenda for 15 minutes and have a conversation about it? I mean, we're all going to be together. I think the homework is come ready to play.
We can't do that Sunday morning?
No.
Just, just trying to squeeze it in.
I mean, we only have on the 22nd, reimagining education, which is a presentation. And so I think to me, it feels like that is the quickest way to, to navigate through this.
So are we not ready now to say if we're comfortable with moving forward to at least give the green light to start developing interims? I mean.
Well, what's the goal? I mean, here's the thing, we're either going to talk about it now or not. So do we want to spend 15 minutes right now and review the goal or not? I'm looking around. Yes or no? Maria? Do we want to spend the next 15 minutes and go over the proposed goal language? Okay.
Okay.
All right. So let's, let's then to your point, let's see the goal. And we'll give some feedback on the goal. And then that means that we'll better equip Josie and team to talk about interims, which will then inform or reaffirm that the budget is supporting interim goal accomplishment.
Yep. We're just talking the goal. We're not getting into the interims and all the details, just the goal. Okay.
Yes.
That can be done in 15 minutes, I believe.
Correct.
I believe in us.
Do we have a timekeeper, Madam Chair?
The alarm has started. The timer is on.
So there's only four slides. So hopefully I can do this in 15 minutes. So on the first slide, what you'll see is current state and a proposed trend. So those first three years, what you're looking at, spring 22, 23 and 24, that is the percent of grade 12 students earning a diploma plus in four years of high school. So one of the things you'll notice about this is that we are specifically looking at all grade 12 students, not grade 12 graduates. So we are looking at that entire population because we know that there is such a high correlation between students who do get a diploma plus and students who graduate. I can provide you with that data, but it sits in about the 90 to 95% range across demographic category, across school, across each of the diploma plus categories. And because of that, we thought it was really important and felt it was really important to, to put that focus on all students and not just graduates. So that's also why those numbers are a little bit lower than what we've talked about in the past, because in the past, we've been looking at percent of graduates. So one of the nice things about this is that if you look at that trend line that for the last three years, we sit right at between 38.8 and 38.2%. You can see exactly what our system is calibrated to give us right now. Our system is calibrated to put out about 38% of our students receiving a diploma plus at the end of their four years of, of high school. So our baseline target that we established for this spring is basically to continue. We've been in this year of building. We've been in this year of learning. And so we, we expect that the spring of 2025 will see about the same. So we've set that kind of 38.5 baseline target. And then if you look at that graph over the following four, following five years, including 2025, we're looking at about a 25% increase over time. How did we get there? How did we identify these numbers? So if you go to the next slide, one of the first places we went, and you've seen a lot of this information about Kansas City, Kansas and their diploma plus program. And we use them as a model. We use them to help us understand what could our system change look like as we develop this program in the coming years? One of the major things that we thought about as we were talking about how to set interims in the next five years was knowing that KCK actually started much lower than us. So in their first year, their baseline status, they were sitting at about 21%, whereas we sit at about 38. So we knew that when they started out, they had a lot more low hanging fruit to grab off the vine. And so knowing that we didn't want to set ourselves up with a set of early targets that, that were going to be well outside of our range when we were already performing at a higher level than where they were. But we wanted to use their trend line over time to help inform where we would see jumps and where we would see increases. And so that's when you look at those targets, what you see, our major jumps mirror theirs. They saw a big 15% increase in that year four, where you get to that end year where you have a set of students who have been through essentially an entire cohort. We set ours at 10, again, just because we're already a little bit higher than them in our baseline. And then we're also anticipating a more consistent growth after that. They had the, the disadvantage of COVID hitting them kind of square in the face in the middle of their increase. But we're hoping to kind of see a smoothing and a consistent then increase over time, which then they've, which you've been able to see then in their, their post-COVID years. Overall, if you look at KCK's numbers, they saw a 27% increase in five years where our target is 25. So we're pretty close to in line with what they, with where they are with that kind of front to bottom or top to bottom change. Which takes us to goal three. So the potential goal three language as we laid it out is the percent of grade 12 students earning a diploma plus in four years will increase from that 38.2% in spring of 2024. Just back mapping that a little bit so that we're starting with the baseline that we know for sure to 63.5% in the spring of 2030. If you go then to the last slide, annual targets, one of the things I wanted to lay out for you was that graph is kind of hard to read. It's all spread out. Is I wanted you to see exactly how those targets line up with one, with one another year over year. And then some additional notes that we've added into that target. We did double the increase between year one and year two, just because we know that year one, this is really going to be the, next year will really be the first year that we're even socializing it with students. And so it won't be on their diploma yet. We're not expecting to see huge changes in that cohort. But then by the time we get to year two, students who will be juniors in the fall will have had two years about of hearing about this. And that will also be then the, or then, and then that year will also be the first year will actually be implemented on the diploma itself. So that's where we start to see those larger increases over times from that two to that four, with that then consistent trend following until we hit that four year cohort. So kind of in summary, the other thing you'll see is that it is a 65% increase from current state to that end state in those five years.
65, where do you see 65%?
65%. So 65% of 38, 25 is 65% of 38. So that's the.
Got it.
Yeah.
So I think you're looking for some just initial reactions to.
Go back to the language then for the board's visibility.
Just my initial thought and so tell me, I shouldn't be trusted with math, so tell me where I'm wrong. KC had a huge dip during COVID. Given all things moving in the right direction, that line should have gone higher. That line should be higher right now if it didn't have that dip in it. And so if that's our model, I wonder if we shouldn't be more ambitious about, and I, I like the idea of ramping this up. The first couple of years, it takes socialization. Given all of our other plans and all the other programs that we have put in place, why wouldn't we see the hockey stick go a little bit higher?
So with that, what we were looking at was the difference for them between 2019 and 2020, so going into that COVID year. We saw that that kind of flat line between those two and we weren't sure whether or not to attribute that to COVID because it was, those students had, you know, three and three quarters years essentially up to that point. Was that flat line because of COVID and losing those last couple of months? Or was there something else that caused a more straight line at that point? Where then they saw that dip the following year? And then all of their systems are in place and they're seeing those significant gains after that.
Is the expectation that as you add programming, so I think about signature schools or some of the other experiences, there's, there's not going to be any read to change this number, but you may actually see it grow. Like the more opportunities you put online that you would count as diploma plus, the more it may accelerate your progress.
Absolutely.
And if what we just heard in the last presentation works, this really should, I mean, like we really should see quick. You would think that there would be some quick gains because there are already so many programs in place where you could earn the plus.
Yeah. I mean, I think maybe this is the conversation we'll have with the interims, because I know the board has to have a conversation actually about some of the federal government guidance that's come down from the Department of Education around how we articulate our goals and guardrails.
That's correct.
But I think, is it in the interim phase that we talk a little bit about the, the way to slice and dice the data? Like for instance, one of the guardrails are on access, right? So when you look at this, you know, can you look at it in different ways and draw a correlation to like, maybe some kids aren't having access, things like that?
So we can, we can, we can look at the interims in several different ways. I think in, in the SOFG model, the intent of the interim is to give you an indication based on highly correlative data that we are on the right track, right? Because this is a, the outcome of a student's four years of access. So we, since that, since we won't know about that until the end of those four years for that individual students, what can we look at in the meantime that will give us ideas and understanding, and understanding of what is working in our system in the meantime? I know one of the things we've talked about pretty significantly around this are things like chronic absenteeism for those nine through 11 students looking at ninth grade on track as a measure to actually look at that, at that readiness. We, we just didn't want to get too far deep into the weeds with that until we felt good about this language and these, and these, and this kind of directionality.
Yeah. What I'm also hearing probably, Madam Chair, and certainly correct me if, if need be, is even as we were thinking about interims to support this goal, right? What percentage of that 38% of students, right, are fit into a certain demographic? what percentage of that 38% of students, right, are fit into a certain demographic makeup or are students with disabilities? And those are considerations that we will have as we start to sort of create and cultivate interims.
Ms. Marterano?
What I'm hearing is you did a root cause analysis on that 38.2% prior to, or as a part of this year-long development process.
Yes.
Okay.
We've done, and that's been part of the work of the Goal Three team.
Okay. And that can be shared with the board or the findings from that root cause analysis? Wonderful. And I have some, some just technical questions regarding like the population of grade 12, and is it our comprehensive high schools only? Is it our online? Is it, you know, I have some of those questions, which I don't, we don't have to get into those right now, knowing that we are six minutes away from our deadline.
Just at a high level, it's all students. It is all students who are enrolled with us at the end of their four years of high school. So that includes students who transfer into us, that includes students with IEPs, that includes students who are on alternate schedules. It, we really tried to keep it as a super broad population, because we felt it was important from an equity standpoint and from a, a true system standpoint to capture as many of those students as possible.
And does it also include our students who are with us longer than their traditional four-year cohort?
Yes.
It does?
Yep. And we're working right now, that's one of the things that's in our list, that's, we like to automate everything in my department. Everything comes directly out of Infinite Campus. That is one piece of this that we're actually doing by hand with, in conjunction with our Student Services Department.
I think my only, thank you for using words and talking about root cause analysis and things like that. That's obviously really important. There's a part of me that would love to see us be more ambitious. And, and, and I don't know what that looks like, and maybe this is ambitious. And I just think we're putting so many eggs in the basket of this goal and a lot of energy and resources, and so I defer to the experts. I hope this is a stretch goal.
I, I appreciate, and I appreciate you sharing the Kansas City's statistics. I could tell there's probably some kind of regression model done to see what the trajectory should look like. And I was just looking up a little bit of Kansas City. I, I would say this is a stretch goal. I mean, Kansas, KCK's school district is also different. I mean, we're not comparing apples to apples at all. So yeah, they, they grew 27%, but they also have 10,000 less students. So I would say if they're growing 27% in five years, and our goal is 25% in five years with very different demographics of students as well, I don't think they have a similar ELL population. There, there's a lot of differences as far as them being a true comp. I, I think 25 is ambitious. I was almost surprised that that is the number that was chosen for five years.
Yeah, thank you for that, Akmi Premi. So while this is for much longer discussion, certainly the reason that this is also a stretch goal is because we are, and while I hear the board applauding and celebrating all of the sort of bold and audacious initiatives we're embarking upon, we are in our infancy of those initiatives.
Right.
Right? And so this is year one, and in some instances, year zero. So how is the board feeling about the goal language? That would be helpful to us.
I am fine with the goal language. Clarifying just what Kim was saying about all students, meaning everybody in all our comprehensive and our other programs, so I think that's right on, on track.
Yeah, I am too. My question was specifically about what you, Ms. Marterano, said. How do students that do not fit into the four years? How, how does this goal, how's it going to work out for them? So, and you answered that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Other feedback?
My only wondering is, and it's been quite some time since I've gone back to that community engagement and outreach data, but does this speak to truly what the community was looking for when we set out to improve outcomes for our, our graduates? So that, that's something that I'm wondering about, and we'll go back to that data and, and see if this truly speaks to what the community was looking for from us.
Yeah, it's a really great question. I mean, I, I think, to me, as I was thinking about this, there's like short term and midterm, right? So short term is diploma plus is a big step in the right direction to try and track and measure directional, like, close. But I think, yeah. But, but I think the, like, reimagining education, right, and some of those career pathways was also very significant in the conversation, and so it's, it's equally as important. I want to make sure everybody think, is there consensus on this as language?
Yes, I am comfortable.
Okay. So look at that. So just to say out loud, next week when we come back together for reimagining education, it's a board meeting, do we want to talk again about this? Like, do we want to go over some budget alignment, or do we want to do that on the 22nd?
22nd. The 22nd. Madam Chair, if I may.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
So then next week.
Next week is regular board meeting, and I think we're getting a presentation on reimagining education.
That's correct.
And.
Goal Two and guardrail one.
Thank you. And then just a reminder, a thoughtful, a lot of follow-up was sent by Dr. Roberts and others on the budget, so let's take some time to look at it, so if there's outstanding questions, those also are surfaced. All right, team, way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, team. Thanks, board.
Yeah, I want to say, Dr. Lundin, this was a really, your whole team and Dr. Roberts, this is a great, I think, this is a really great presentation, and we'd probably be happy to have another few hours of this. So, thank you.
And lastly, we left you the new.
Yes, I saw that.
And the website is going live, so.
Are we offline?
Are we, you need to accept.
Or no? If, let me go offline, I can give her.
Well, I think, yeah, but we have to make sure Josie and Dr. Lundin are out.